Thirty seconds ago.
We have a phone booth in there.
No phone?
Wait a minute, where are the black glasses?
He was wearing them when he came in.
Aiden?
Yes.
Hi, Aiden.
Hi. We're live.
Okay, welcome, Litchfield. Welcome to the June twenty-third meeting of Board of Selectmen. The board's just having a non-public and a work session.
I'll write for a call. Question please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as I said earlier, we just came out of a brief non-public and a work session. A paperwork review is what I should really call it. First up is the review and approval of consent items. In this evening's consent, we have the AP manifest for six seventeen for seventy thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. We have the June twenty-fourth AP manifest for fifty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Payroll manifest for June nineteenth, sixty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-seven cents. And June twenty-sixth for sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and one dollars and eighty-five cents. We have the fund balance policy as amended and approved in the June ninth meeting. A credit card policy as approved in the June ninth meeting. And the current credit card list, which you should review as part of the review of that policy. Purchase order for the New England Sports and Floor as approved for on June ninth by the board. We have the May twenty-twenty-five town clerk reconciliation. We have the May twenty-five, May twenty-twenty-five treasures reconciliation. And then we have the school payment schedule for twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six, which is tentative to the school board approve, tentative to school board approval for two million, two million dollars for July first of twenty-twenty-five. Anybody wish to remove anything or?
I'd like to add one item. Make a motion to add the discussion on funds for the United States two hundred and seventy-fifth.
This is consent right now, so additional person.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Anything to be removed out of consent? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Gannon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero zero. Request for additional business or other items to be added to tonight's agenda. Mr. Gannon?
I'll make a motion to add the discussion on funds for the United States two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary celebration for the town. And I spoke with our TA earlier today, and she mentioned there was some funds available in different accounts, and she was gonna pull some information together for us. See if we can add that to the later.
So added. All right, public input will occur no earlier than six forty-five PM, although.
Clock is ticking.
Do we have the vote to put that in? We have the vote to put that in.
I'm motioning. Do I add?
Second.
I had one more I wanted to add. Very minor. I don't even, I don't even know if we have a policy on it, but with the hot weather, a hundred degrees, do we have a policy in town where to go if it's way too hot for people?
That would be the emergency management.
Is that emergency management?
Yeah.
Can we get that information out to people? I don't know how that works, but.
Yeah, I'll contact, I'll talk, contact Chief Nickel in the morning.
That, that was all.
He did put out, you did put out something this weekend.
He put something out like, you know, he cross posted it about the sense heat coming up, yeah.
Oh, so it's already out?
Well, there is, this.
On Facebook.
On Facebook it was put out for, there was no notion of a location, I don't think.
No, there wasn't a cooling station.
We don't have a, as far as I know, we don't have a cooling station, so.
But I can check with, it's, so fire is the emergency management. I'll, I'll check with him first thing in the morning and see. I think in the past, you've had the fire station, the community room?
Yeah.
For water?
Yeah, for water. We've had it open in the past, yeah. Or even the town hall, too. We've had the, this, this classroom opened up, too.
We can do that as well.
For charging and all, so.
All right, so we have a motion on the table, we have a motion seconded for the addition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, carries five zero zero, so it's added to the agenda. All right, first up for business will be approval of minutes for June ninth. Everybody just read?
Yep.
I have a motion?
A motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Motion by Mrs. Plansky. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? Motion carries four zero one. All right, so first up in the policies is use of town seal policy as amended. I think, I think we're in agreement that we're just gonna leave it the way it was. Do I have a motion? I, did we officially vote it out last time? I know we, you did, so it was already voted and approved. So there's no action to be taken, just we're not gonna make any additions to it.
Well, the minutes had, we've mentioned to add things to this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so there's no reason to open it back up and change it, right?
Maybe you should make the motion to.
Reap, reapprove?
Leave as is, however you wanna make that motion.
To, to remove the changes that we made last meeting?
There were no changes.
Okay, we didn't have a vote?
We discussed some odd parts about doing it, and I think after we talked, it didn't make a lot of sense, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we confirm the approval of the use of the town seal policy as discussed and approved in the last, in our last session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leary. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Okay, first, request by the moderator town clerk election machines. Would Steve Perry and Ms. Breen like to join us?
Hi, everybody. How are ya? Come on. Yeah, it'll be him the only one in the hot seat.
I was in Gardenito.
Anybody enjoying the weather?
No.
Yes, I love it.
Kim needs it, though.
It's nice, it's nice on Saturdays and Sundays when I can sit in my backyard. It's not nice when I'm working, no. All right, so, this is something we talked about when we had the polls last time. It was obvious that our new equipment was fabulous. Check-in process was the best we've ever seen, almost too good. So it led us to find that the issue we had was the backup at putting the ballots into the machine. The machine takes three to five seconds to process the ballot, which really isn't any longer than the old machines. The problem is, is the length of the ballot, which we found out, does increase the time. So, long story short, I put together a list of our total needs. I know that the town has some municipal impact fees. I don't know that this is the appropriate use for them or not, but my theory was, if it's not, let's get a list so that we can add to it, because these are needs that we need for growth. And with another plan that just came in front of the planning board last week, there's an additional eighty units proposed, so we could be up to almost seven hundred residents that we're gonna see as an increase in the next few years. Which is just gonna be more voters, which is gonna increase the amount of time for people to go through the process. So, with that being said, we would like two new machines to increase the capacity to get people through the lines. As I said last time, we got them through so fast to check them in. We do have a regulation, when I looked it up, it is a process that we're supposed to have somebody processed within thirty to forty minutes maximum, and that was during the presidential election. That was based on the fact of like, kinda like the criteria is supposed to hold. And our problem is, we had people waiting in line seventeen to twenty-three minutes just to put their ballots in the machine. That runs us into the issue of, they're not supposed, you're not supposed to be standing in the voting area holding a ballot unless it's marking it and then putting it in the machine.
Right.
So there's no regulation that says that we're in violation for that, because it's a good thing that people wanna come and vote. I just think that we can better serve the people by having more equipment. The ultimate goal when we bought the pole pads was to add two more over time as well. We would need some more eight-foot tables, four-foot tables we would need, because last time we had the school bring them over, and that was quite a hassle, because it was, it was right until about the last half hour before we were done setting up, before they even got them, because they didn't even know where they had them. So we need to buy some of those, the four-place voting booths, so that we need to increase the number of booths we have, based on the number of registered voters we have. And extension cords, power blocks, things like that. The estimate for this is about twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. The other option on the voting machine is you can rent them. The problem is, is you're gonna rent it for one use, one election, and it's thirty-eight hundred dollars. That's for one day, one election. So you rent it twice, you might as well have bought one.
Right.
So granted, there are the costs to get the machines inspected every year and all of that, but. So that's where we're at. Again, if you could use the impact fees you have for the municipal, that would be great. But I don't know. I told you guys when we were there at the elections that we would have this conversation someday. Here we are.
The more ballots that we, the more warrant articles, the more ballots that we have, the longer the machine takes. And that is where we put a lot of things on warrant articles to give the residents, you know, their choices. It makes the ballot longer, which causes an issue with how long it takes to get three or four ballots through the machine for a person.
Yeah, I mean, being a person that sits there all day working those ballots, I, I, I recognize the need, an immediate need for at least one more, one more. Definitely, we should do it. We have to do something.
If, if I was gonna make a recommendation at the absolute minimum is to add a machine as soon as we possibly can, because that will help that line for people trying to put their ballots in and get them out. If, if we've got people waiting in line seventeen to twenty-three minutes right now, a third machine's not gonna make that line zero. But it's gonna make it a lot better than seventeen.
And God forbid one of the machines goes down.
God forbid one machine goes down, we're gonna be in a world of hurt.
I think the machines have improved the efficiency, at least the, you know, the counting, the backend side of it's gotten a lot better, but it does take time to process, like you said. My, I think during the election, the, the national election, I go, we need at least one more machine. I'm not sure how we're gonna organize people to get to that one machine, but that's something else we gotta think about, but.
Right. I, I've thought of doing a different layout so that we could put people in a queue outside of the voting area, but it's still, it would still have to be in the voting area. But the problem is, is to create a line is just really difficult, because we don't have endless amounts of space.
Right.
And the parking, the parking becomes a problem.
Yeah, the longer the people are in their room, the longer the, you know, the parking gets a little more challenging if we've got more people there.
And ironically, some people will think that the town election is like the lowest turnout, but the town election is our longest ballots.
Yeah.
Because when all the things get put on the ballot as, as warrants, that's what makes it take the longest. So like, presidential election is one sheet.
Right.
As long as the machine says, you're good, turn around and walk away, you don't have to stand there and keep loading. So when we have three or four ballots, people are standing at the machine for thirty seconds.
Yeah, I know from my perspective, there's no disagreement, we should get one machine, if not two at some point. And the pole pads, I've seen that has improved a lot of the check-in, right? We've, we've made that successful, we created a problem in the backside of it.
Just move the bottleneck.
The pole pads were phenomenal.
Yeah.
They, I, I, I can't say, I, like, I had, I was hopeful that they were gonna be what they were. It was even better than I expected. It was, 'cause even I sat down, and we, we all take turns when we're filling in for breaks, and I like to have a piece of everything that's going on in there, so I can see, if somebody makes a complaint, I know exactly what they're talking about, because I've experienced it. And like, when I was doing the pole pads, by the third person I checked in, it's like, it's almost like a race to see how, if you can do it faster than the last time. It's crazy how fast it was, so.
And it's great on the other end with the pole pads, too, because at the end of the, the next day, when we're trying to count the books and trying to count the, the books to match the, we still have to do a book, but we have to match that book to what went into the machine and what the pole pads do at the end of the night. Pole pads can tell us the number, and the machine can tell us the number, so we don't have to count the book and do all that at that time. So it's much quicker in getting out of there.
Yeah.
It saves a lot of.
It saves a lot of labor hours.
And, yes.
So what's the, well, does the board have any questions for these two fine people?
I definitely agree that, I agree it helped and moved the line, moved the bottleneck. And I would say, yes, we need two machines. The biggest problem is funding.
So, impact fees are to be used for capital items that.
Is that the municipal one you're talking about?
Which would be.
What was that?
I mean, it, it, the town's growing, right? It's deserved more.
And that's, that's the purpose of impact.
Capital improvements to deal with growth. I think the challenge that we have, and I'll have Ms. Kleiner speak to it, is that the two thousand and fourteen, what was written up was very specific to the building, and none of the services within the building, which is terrible, because we didn't think about it ten years la- later, we didn't consider that the growth is gonna create external constraints on our services, too, because quite frankly, I look at the pole, the pole location as an extension of this building. Right? 'Cause that's, we have to provide it someplace where we can do it. So I kinda, I kinda feel like we should be able to leverage those dollars to do it. Some of the items wouldn't qualify, 'cause they're not really capital, if you wanna be really finite it, but the voting machines and the pole pads, I think, and maybe even, I would even argue even the voting booths, because those are required. A statute would be something we could classify and do it that way. That's my thought process. I don't know how the rest of the board thinks.
Well, and not to interrupt, but I know that Kim had sent a ruling from, I think the ruling was twenty sixteen.
Twenty fourteen was, yeah, and twenty sixteen was the ruling, yeah.
Yeah, that Troy had asked a question, and devil's advocate to me says, if the question was asked that way, it was answered that way.
Well.
If the question was asked a different way.
Yeah, so.
No, I don't agree.
The que, the two thousand and sixteen, it had several questions that are very specific. One was about the parking lot and repair of the parking lot, was the, the site work at the fire station or pre-site work at the fire station, and then there was a, a question about, um, there was one other question, I wrote it down somewhere, let me just check it out here. It was, yeah, it was really, I focused on the one for the parking lot and repair of a place of the generator, because what he, but what he said in his closing was, you know, the very basic part of it is, the, the basic for the fee is for growth, and these things are driven by growth. I would argue that the parking lot being wear and tear, it's more people in this building, wear and tear quicker and faster wear and tear. I would say the generator is another place where you expand services in the building with, even in the four walls, and you increase your power output, you need a bigger generator, right? It's just so, I, this, to me, if I read it, that's how I read it. And again, it's my opinion. There are four little folks that could chime in, too.
Is that why the Mulberry or Mayberry report was here?
Yes, so, um.
He was very specific, yes.
I, I get, we keep talking about growth. That's a very little of the impact fee requirement, is that it has to pertain to growth. That's very little. The main part of impact fees, and there's a statute that speaks to what you can use it for, that's statute, that's not Bruce, that's not Jay Menkara, that's state legislature. And so, you know, stormwater drainage, flood control facilities, municipal road systems, rights of way, municipal office facility buildings, like buildings, facilities, public school facilities, capital facilities in a cooperative or a regional school district, public safety facilities, solid waste collection, recycling, processing, disposal, disposal facilities, public library facilities, public recreation facilities. That's it. That's the list. And so, you know, I understand, and I do wanna kinda clarify this, 'cause I kinda keep hearing this over and over from a lot of our departments. We made a motion to use impact fees for the gate at the highway. The gate at the highway is a permanent structure. It is wired into the building, under pavement, in a municipal right-of-way that is improving that right-of-way. That's why it fit into this. And I don't think we talked enough about that when we approved it, for people to understand that may be listening. It is now a part of the facility. So it, it's a facility improvement for the safety of the facility, and it, it's permanent. But, so that's my concern. I agree, we've gotta find the money to do these, and I think maybe we can. To buy it, it, with default, it's a little difficult, but, I mean, if we know it's a board's priority and it's the town clerk and moderator's priority, we'll, we'll do our very best.
Yeah, I was just trying. I was trying to help, that's all.
I know.
And it would.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
It would help.
We still have the need.
Yeah.
So it was, it was an approach that I used as, maybe we can do this. I was just trying to help, that's all.
What is the lead time for the machine?
It's a while, right?
I thought the last time, when I was talking to him, I thought he said six to eight weeks. So it's, it should be pretty.
'Cause everybody's moving over to these machines now.
Right.
Has everyone got theirs?
Like, if it came to the end of the year, we should be able to have it in time for our first election next year.
Right.
So if I can interject one thing. So when I read the use of the impact fees, specific out of this two thousand and fourteen document, it says, since the municipal office under the, the spartial, spartial standard applied, whatever the heck that was, spatial standard applied, indicates the space was roughly or slightly overcapacity needed in two thousand when it was built, but the impact fees collected to be used for the facility, construction and expansion, or the costs to convert the police station portion to build into a general municipal use, including office space storage and meeting functions. Couldn't we apply the meeting functions? This is a town meeting that's held offsite, because we can't host it here.
That'd work to me.
I, I, again, what I'd like to see is too, is author, at least let them go get the one machine and the pole pads and the booths they need for the next election, and then see if we can figure out how to fund the second, the second of the, of the two they asked for, the voting machines, in the following budget. And we're talking about seven thou, let, let's call it six, it's, I'll say seven thousand dollars. Sixty-five, sixty-five, seventy-five is the total cost, but I'd say it gives, it'll give you seven for any cost issues. I mean, again, it's, it's a meeting function. We just can't hold it, host it here, the growth is, we gotta be able to someplace else.
And we're not replacing, we're.
Adding to.
Adding to.
Right.
So therefore, I mean, you can't replace.
But I think one of the things we need to come out of this, we need to ask the planning board, do we look at this and get it updated? Because it doesn't factor in the growth we've had with people.
Mm-hmm.
Right? It doesn't affect it that we have, our, our registered, registered voters have climbed. We've got a process, we have machines that inherently take a little longer, but result in the end cleans up the end, the end pile that we have to deal with from a workgroup perspective. It would make sense that they, this would be viable to use, and again, we're improving something. We're not buying a, we're not, we, we have a need, no, it's not a why, it's really a need.
And it's a need based on expansion of.
And again, I know I'm bringing it very wide, but.
Again, I would really stress that any department, any board that has needs, fills out a capital expenditure sheet this year, sends it to CIP, so we can get it on the CIP list, which will make this process about improve, you know, approving things much easier.
Still fifty K, though, you said. It's still fifty K limit, I thought, most.
It is, but generally, capital expenses are generally fifty grand or more, and.
It's a depreciation item, it doesn't.
What can we get for fifty?
Yeah, right, all of a sudden, the price of it just went.
Well, I know, like, I struggle, I struggle from an IT perspective, 'cause even my biggest project, all in.
Yeah, the fifty thousand is not a, a valid thing, it's, it's something that you would depreciate over time, that has a lifespan.
Capital can change that. Capital improvement can, has the ability to change that.
Fifty thousand is, is a arbitrary depreciation.
If they do cha, if they do, so when we did the last impact fee study, the capital improvement committee looked at what was on the CIP list, or what was presented to them for needs for municipal, um, rec and highway, and they didn't make any changes to those three plans. The only ones that were changed was the school, um, police and fire. So in order to make changes, they would have to open up the whole plan, the whole impact fee schedule again, decide which sections need to be addressed, go through that process. It would have to come back to, well, planning board, public hearing, planning board, public hearing here, approved by you.
How much impact fees are returned to construct, people that do construction, because their funds are not spent within the allotted time?
Well, we have returned a lot in the past.
Right.
We've turned, yeah, we've turned a lot of money back. That, that's ridiculous to me, is that we're returning money back when we have valid items that are, yes, but we've got a valid item that could be, that is a capital expenditure that should be paid out of it.
Idea of the revolving trust fund was another, a revolving trust fund was another potential.
Yep.
Right? To get on a warrant article, right? Twenty thousand or whatever.
I, I had asked about that last year, about doing it so that we would have it year over year, and then it would level out the cost, but it didn't meet the expectations of.
But that's another option.
Right. So I think we are looking last year about doing the, from year to year, your budget fluctuates because of the number of elections. And so we are looking at incorporating that fluctuation amount into a revolving fund. I think you could just do an amount, like, you could put even into an expendable trust, you could have an elections expendable trust for, the board could put in money either from, you know, unassigned fund balance, leftover funds or whatever, and create a cushion for you. I, I think we can absolutely do that. The part that they were, that legal was concerned about is you would get this revolving fund set up, and you wouldn't be able to use it, because you'd have to go back to town meeting to use it.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the, the reason why it wasn't loved was because it had to be raised every year.
Yeah.
At that amount, and if it didn't, where would the money come from then?
Right.
That was, so I mean, and, and I understood that, but I mean, it was another idea I tried, it, but it, when we talked about it as a group, it didn't, it didn't work out to be the best idea, that's fine.
I think we still need that capital revolving, you know, that capital fund, which you could put any, you know, vehicles and equipment, broad, broad.
This is the unassigned balance.
Whatever the voters approve.
No, it could be funded by the unassigned fund balance.
It could be funded from the unassigned.
Yeah, I don't recommend that, but.
Well, otherwise you're raising it, you're gonna be asking for, whether the money's gonna be raised by taxes when we have money in the bank account.
You still have to put it on a warrant article, and as soon as you say unassigned fund balances, the voters say no.
I think, Diane, I think our, truthfully, our job now is try to convince the voters it's not a bad thing. It's our savings account. We gotta figure that out, right? 'Cause we have, we have excess money in that account that we can either do it one time in the fall and lower the taxes, or we can take it and use it to do the things that we do that we have to raise tax appropriation for anyway.
I don't know a town that doesn't use it that way. I don't, I don't.
I think the last election, everyone's got this bad taste, for whatever reason. We gotta figure out how to help people understand that unassigned fund balance is not a bad thing. That's usually, that's usually a result of revenues being higher than we expect, new cars coming in more than we expected. We were, we were very good in appropriations, and we had savings in our appropriations, and we wanna use those same dollars we raised to not have to raise it again in the following year, because at the end of the day, there's no mechanism to put that money back in our pack and our taxpayers' pocket, right? Other than artificially lowering the taxes one time and have it bounce back up again. This is one way to help us offset that. And the amount isn't gonna be enough for people to.
Yeah.
Even if we were writing che, even writing checks to say, write everybody, everybody's in a check.
Then we need to. Then we need to come up with a really good, really good way to reach the taxpayers. You look confused, Kim. We need to come up with a really good, no, she was looking at
I'm not confused.
Yeah, no, we need to have a really good way that we can explain this to the taxpayer because we just got our tax assessment letters all over town today, and they're gonna be going into the next.
We posted.
They're gonna be going into the next.
Sent out flyers. Well, I think multiple, multiple methods.
I know.
We as a board can't get up in front of, we we as a board or individuals can't get up in the, in front of the public and say, if it was me, I'd give it back the money and put it back in your pocket. You can't do it. It's no mechanism to do it. I wish we could do it too. If I owe, if I owe you ten dollars, it's gonna cost me fifteen dollars to get it back to you. Right? So now I'm raising five more dollars to give you back your ten dollars.
Why wouldn't it be? We're clearly expanding service.
Because services is not in the classification.
Right, it's not in the classification.
That's what everybody uses when they come for impact.
I I agree.
I agree.
I agree with you. I I I'm
I'm I'm still on the impact fee portion of it. I'm still thinking that there has to be a way that we can raise those fees. Rather than give that money back to a construction agency to
Right now, if the board wants to, I can
It's up to the board.
I make, I make a motion that we leverage the impact fee, the impact fees from a municipal, municipal fund. Impact fees from the municipal account of the total of seven thou- not to exceed, seven thousand dollars to purchase one voting machine, two pole pads and the three four place voting booths. Uh it comes at sixty five, seventy five. I'm giving them seven thousand.
One voting machine is seven thousand.
Oh, it's seven thousand, sorry, I took it as two, I'm sorry. I take that back. Let me just redo the math.
Why don't we do one voting machine, one pole pad, one voting booth, and then the tables and whatnot? That's a much easier apple to bite right now.
But the tables are
Expense items.
For expense items. They're not capital, they're not, they're, you know.
It's used for the same purpose.
No, I got it, I got it. I'm I'm okay. Would one pole pad be enough or do we, cause I think you needed, I thought you needed two more for the re- re-registration table, right? And then
One for registration, one for the checklist supervisors.
Right, so that's why the two, that's why they're asked to put two.
That's why we have the two.
So.
So that's eighty seven, seventy five.
So I made my motion to eighty seven, seventy five.
Those um checklist supervisors will need to, with new people coming in, they need to register them at polls with those pole pads. So they're gonna need one before another check in person.
So I'll amend my motion to half the dollar amount of eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy five dollars again, to purchase one voting machine, two pole pads.
That two pole pads should be ten five.
You're killing me.
Yeah, well, you you
It says each after each line.
Well, do the one for now. Do the second one when you get the second machine.
Now, not getting that.
So a voting machine, seven, and a pole pad is seventeen, seventy five each, so seven plus seventeen, seventy five plus seventeen, seventy five.
Ten, six, fifty?
Five, ten, five, five, fifty.
Is that what you got?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's what I happened to be doing math in my head while I'm flying.
And so you don't want the pole, the booth? But you said one booth.
I don't think that was, that might be something we could chase down next time, but
Or we can find it in the budget. We'll find thirteen hundred dollars in the budget.
Trust me, if you guys can approve a machine right now and two pole pads, we can wait for the rest.
Okay.
Does this all fit in the trailer?
What was that?
It's all fit in the trailer. Cause then we're gonna need another.
Leo, Leo reorganized that thing.
He's great at Tetris.
I already reorganized the whole trailer.
Are you kind of taking this out of the impact fees or the
Yeah, impact fees, we're back in impact fees.
Can you reread that definition for me on the impact fees? I think it's based on the size of the building expanding, right?
It was
Yes, is that the law?
Not the law.
No, it was a decision. It it wasn't the law.
No, what I read was the statute.
It was a
A statute of what?
Impact fees.
The statute from the state?
Yeah, it was services and
RSA.
And did it say services or, what, can you repeat?
It says a lot of things. You have it right there on your
I know, but it's, I remember going through this a long time, many times on the planning board.
RSA six seventy four.
Yeah.
They are authorized for water treatment and distribution facilities, wastewater treatment and disposal facilities, sanitary sewers, stormwater drainage and flood control facilities, municipal road systems and rights of way, municipal office facilities, public school facilities, the municipality's proportional share of capital facilities of a cooperative or regional school district, public safety facilities, solid waste collection, transfer, recycling, processing and disposal facilities, library, public library facilities and public recreation facilities, except for purchasing open space.
Municipal office facilities would be what I would put it on now.
Yep.
That's what I would put on it too.
Let's do that. You have a motion?
Same motion, doesn't really matter.
What's the dollar amount?
Ten, five, five, zero.
All right, ten, three, five, oh, okay. I'll second that. Take the two hundred and buy another table.
That's ten, five.
It's ten, five, five.
Ten, five, five.
Ten, five.
Ten, five, five, two.
Yep.
So I have a motion, I made a motion and it was seconded by Mr. Leary, and we sort of discussion.
I'm going to vote yes on this and I want to say that it's because these impact fees, if not spent, are returned to the contractor who pays them based on using land for building homes that increase um the amount of services that we need to provide to the town. So yes, I'm gonna vote yes. That's my part of the discussion.
My part is I'm gonna vote no because I do believe impact fees are to increase the size of the building.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay in, the motion carries four, one, zero.
Thank you very much.
Very, very welcome.
Do you want me to still fill out something for the CIP? Or is it gonna be so miniscule now that
Yeah, no, we're we're all set. We'll make sure Terry and I will work with Karen and we'll get Terry whatever she needs to order them.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Terry.
While Terry's still here, do we want to talk about the warrants of unlicensed dogs?
I just wanna say, I think you need the voting machines, but I disagree with the impact fee.
Well, trust me, I understand where you're coming from.
Sorry, dogs.
Risk versus reward.
Have fun.
Okay.
You pulled her up there.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night. So what is there to talk about the warrants?
They do have it.
The warrant, you haven't signed it yet, obviously.
Is it in this?
Yeah, it's in
I was trying not to do this while people were here. I thought it was rude.
Actually, it's right actually right here.
Eight rude.
Yeah.
For sixty nine unlicensed dogs.
That's it.
So let's see, the warrant is
Is that low?
There we go.
I'll make sure it's not a dog in it at all.
How much does it cost for my dog to be put on the list?
It depends. It could make it anywhere from, you know, ten dollars to uh
Seven thousand.
So I think the, when they, after they approve it, what happens with the list?
So once you approve it, it gets turned over, it gets turned over to the police department. Um what I will do is print out the civil forfeiture letters. Um there's a twenty five dollar civil forfeiture that goes onto their accounts and a five dollar administration fee. So if they have four dogs, it's twenty five dollars per dog and five dollars for the administration fee. Um and then the police department will deliver the civil forfeiture. They'll have a certain amount of time to pay it, along with registering the dog. Um if the rabies is not up to date, then um there's a twenty five dollar fine for the rabies not being up to date. We call people throughout the year, um every month, if their rabies is about to expire in, so it's June, so if their rabies are expiring in July or August, we call them and say, just a heads up, your rabies is about to expire, you might wanna call a vet and, you know, get an appointment so that the dog's rabies doesn't expire. Um and we keep up with that and let people know about that as well. So what'll happen is police department, um will go out, they'll deliver the civil forfeitures, they give them a certain amount of time. If they don't pay it in that um time span, then it goes over to the prosecutor and they get the summons to go to court and they face the judge. These are not fees, I just, that the town, the town doesn't get all these fees. This is required by state law. Um a lot of these fees go to the state. The amount that we keep is for the paper, the dog licenses, um and the the time, the very little time that we all put into it. Um but a lot of this money, people have to understand, it's not the town, it's actually the state and it's a state law. If they wanna fight it, they can go to court and they can fight it and
How many
It's for the safety of the of the town, basically, too, if your dog's not.
Yeah, it's not right, I mean, how many times is the PD gonna go find a dog? Cause they found it, they can look it up and that's, gets the dog back to the home.
Yeah.
Faster, faster. What was the number last year? It was a lot worse last year.
Oh, yeah, we had a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty last year at this time.
It was her top dog contest.
Was the contest, I think. I do think so.
We had a lot of dog, we have over, well, we had, what, sixty something left. Um I gave a license today, it was nineteen oh nine or nineteen oh eight was the dog license that I gave out today. So we have a lot of
Lot of dogs.
Dogs in town.
And do we know that all these listed are still in town?
Um we called, we left them messages, we emailed them.
So you you've reached out and they haven't returned, so if they return and said, hey, I no longer live there, or I don't have the dog, it'd be a different situation, but these, you've made, you've exhausted all attempts to reach out.
Some of those people on there might be those people, right? But I mean, for the most part, you you like, if you find out, like, when I lost my dogs, you knew I lost my dogs, you, rather than send me a
I won't send it, yeah.
If she knows, she won't send it.
If any of us know, we take the dog out of the system.
Yep.
We don't wanna send those letters. If they move out of town, we'll take the dog out of the system. Um there's people on our, on some of, you know, the pages that used to live here that don't live here anymore, but they're still on the Facebook page or whatever, and they'll say, oh, you know, my dog passed away, and I'll go in and look it up. Well, they don't live in town anymore, but I, you know, I I still check it to make sure that it
I could, I recognize one in here that I know for sure, but we'll talk separately.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just jump in on this real quickly. Um it's labor intensive for the dispatcher and then for the officers, but I'll say that with the stuff that they do, they do it when they have free time. Where I struggle with this is when the prosecutor has to get involved because now we're talking about court time and preparation time. Quite honestly, he has better things to do than to deal with this, but it's something that obviously has to be done.
That's fair. Your presentation been going creative paperwork services again. Alright, so we need to make a motion to approve the warrant.
So moved.
A second.
Motion brought by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Ms. Plansky. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero, zero.
Three signatures on this?
If everybody can sign it too.
We're gonna have to do this after.
Okay. Thank you. Terry, uh town hall hours.
Yes.
And I guess I'll leave, let you run on here.
Then I can go.
So you wanna lead us on the the town hall hours?
Sure, so um I did include a um a memo. I think we had a um meeting, a leadership meeting um last week. We talked about this, um all the department heads. Um everyone was still in favor of continuing the new hours. Just to be clear, this does not affect, uh transfer station has its own hours, does not affect highway. Um obviously, the uh police or fire. Um this is strictly the town hall offices, building department and um town clerk's o- office. Um we think, you know, there are still some that are not aware that the offices, uh that the hours have changed. Um there are some that show up on Friday afternoons. Um but by far, there's quite a bit of uh people that take advantage of the Monday nights. I mean, it's just very busy. Um so in that aspect, we think this has accomplished what we wanted to accomplish. Um I did have um one ask. So when there are employees, and I wanna be frank, most of us here are salaried employees, um except for three. When someone takes a vacation day on a Fri- on a Monday, they are docked ten hours for that vacation day. Whether or not they stay later on another day and work and make up whatever work they missed on Monday. So quite often, if you're out on a Monday, um you stay late someday during the week to do that work. I mean, the work doesn't go away. No one else does the work. The work's still there. So we would like um the opportunity for up to two hours to be made up Tuesday through Friday, whatever those other days are. So maybe the person stays Friday till two and makes up that work. It gives them the, an opportunity to make up some of that work and they're still, then they're only getting docked an eight hour holiday on Monday versus ten. And when you start taking days, holidays, and you're working out, oh, I I need a week, you need forty. So you need eight hour slots generally. If you take ten, it generally
So would you consider that if Monday was a holiday, rather than a ten hour day holiday, ten hour holiday, would you just make it an eight hour holiday and then go back to eight hours on Friday? Is that what you would do? Cause there's Monday, a lot of Monday holidays, as opposed to Monday vacation days.
Well, we haven't, um most people have been getting the ten hour holidays um on a Monday, um
So you wanna get the ten hour holiday, you just don't wanna get docked the ten hour holiday?
I don't. I'm here on Friday afternoon, so um you know, most of the time, a lot of us salaried people, I mean, Terry was here last Friday afternoon with me and uh for many of us, it doesn't really work out that way. We we don't normally work an eight hour day. It's just, we have a lot more work than we have staff. Um so, I mean, I have, it's the hourly people that would have a problem if you reduced the holiday to eight hours. Cause when are we gonna make them stay another day to make up that? If we are only giving eight hours on a holiday? I think the hourly people will probably take the ten hour, the ten hour vacation.
We're only talking about earn time.
Yes, we're only talking about
The town hall's closed, town hall's closed.
Right.
So earn time being vacation time only, earn time not holidays, so it's good, the town hall's closed, town hall's closed.
Yeah.
How's it been working on Friday? Cause then you only have to take four hours of vacation. Do you see a lot of people fighting?
Yep.
Take
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Can I get the other side of it too?
And for some of us, we can't be out at the same time.
Right.
Karen and I can't be out at the same time. Laura and Terry can't be out at the same time. So it's difficult. So sometimes, you know, if one takes a Friday, one will take a Monday. Like, you know, so I did that, I did that at Memorial Day.
Eight to ten.
She took the Friday, I took the Monday. She took the Friday, I took the Monday, um, because we can't be out the same day. And that happens with you and Laura, too, so.
When they push the two hours forward, you have to use it, so if you, are you gonna use it within that week or?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, I don't think we should get into carrying hours, would you agree, Terry?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, it's just that their direct department head said, "Okay, you got your two hours, but during the week, you're gonna put an extra hour in here, make up time." You didn't date, because we're so-
I do agree, there's no, no shortage of work ethic in the, in the town offices. We have people that work a lot of hours.
I think department heads are, um, doing their jobs and managing their employees correctly. They'll, they'll manage, manage it. We're not allowing to leave the week, we're allowing to say, "Hey, just make up the hours," because, like I said, if you, if you take four hours off, you're gonna be trying to make up four hours later on somewhere, whether you're just staying overtime or not, so. I think it's, I think it's fair, we should probably police it and if we get any complaints about it, it does not being, either treated fairly across the board, when it's done fairly across the board, we should probably have a conversation about it, but it makes sense. But I did want to, you know, I don't want, someone, people, some folks asked about whether the building is, how the hours were working for the public.
Hmm.
And I think, looking, as you all know, there's two cameras in the lobby. This camera is the one that actually sits over the service windows. Mondays by far, it seems to be a hit. There are people here up to six o'clock, right to close. I do not see, I, every once in a while, I get one person walking into the room, the, the, the town hall after twelve.
On a Friday?
On a Friday. But for the most part, the business is the first four hours of the day and then it kind of, it, it drops right off and there's been no accident, no other, uh, times. The only variation on those, this is, this is weak, this is a weak look at a time, so it's a little, a little tough, can't show it all one shot. But you'll see, this is Monday.
Yep.
Here's the Friday peak before noon time, it, by eleven o'clock, they're, you know, everyone's up, done and done. On tax time, or at least end of the month, you do see a spike that happens. Whoops, did it the wrong way, sorry. That's Monday. There's a spike on the last day of the month.
Yep.
I'm sure that's, not, people not planning appropriately when their reservations are expiring.
And we're here, five minutes to seven.
Mm-hmm.
Again, throughout the week, Monday's definitely by far the busiest, Tuesday's probably the second busiest.
No, is this the week after tax day, or after the tax day? Is that, yeah, okay, so you saw, Monday was extra busy for those people, but didn't make it on Friday.
Yep. So, I mean, I, again, I think if we update the, the door, people actually see the hours more frequently. This may actually work out fairly well. Um, I'm, you know, like I said, it seems like Monday nights are definitely busy, which I think people have been craving for that return of that evening hours.
Yeah.
So we have to kind of maintain that and obviously our budgets allow us to extend hours anyplace else. This seems to be the best path forward.
So it looks like on, it's hard to read at this angle, but on Fridays, usually around eleven o'clock, it dies off.
Yeah.
That's even before the town hall closes, okay?
Yep. Yeah, like I said, here's somebody that came in, one person walked in between two and three.
Yeah.
It could have been, here's the problem of, could have been me walking to the door, could have been you walking out the other side. They didn't linger long, but they were here, they, someone was in at that hour. And I tend to come through Friday afternoon after two anyway.
So this is just picked up through the, this is cool. It's just picked up through the camera, how many people are walking in?
Yeah, yeah.
Very cool.
I mean, I think the only other person that it doesn't really work for, and we've kind of been managing this, um, is our building inspector. Because what happens is no one's having inspections from like four to six on a Monday night. Contractors that are doing building work, they often need inspections on Friday afternoons to close out a project so that they can start something else on Monday. So Matt has been wonderful and he works it with the, um, contractors.
So he works his own schedule outside of town hall?
He will work Friday afternoons and go do the inspections that the contractors need.
But knowing he's not expected to be here late Monday.
Monday, yeah, and we've been just managing that as needed.
That seems pretty easy to do, though, he's just working forty hours. When people are working forty hours.
Okay.
I think when you have good employees who can, as long as they're servicing the community the way they're supposed to service the community, we shouldn't be micromanaging the specific hours they work. Obviously, we want him in the, in seat when the, the building's open as much as possible, but he does have things outside the building he's gotta take.
He's gotta be on the road at times.
Yep, that's the nature of his job.
As long as he's continually managing his schedule based on the calendar and it's in the calendar, we know where he is. If we're looking for him, we can find him, I think, I think it's fine. We hire good people, we should treat them like good employees.
So the, all the managers together, all the town department heads all agree that this, they like the schedule and it's working for them and it's working for the town?
I know, like the residents, like, we had someone called, "Are you guys open any evenings?" Yeah, Monday nights and they, cause if they get out of work at four o'clock or five o'clock, then they can come in and get their business done or, I mean, we're here, uh, at seven, so sometimes people come in at seven. You know, as soon as I come in, I get my stuff done, if there's somebody. We've had people out there that are playing their music, just waiting at the window, just waiting, wait.
Frequently open the window. They're frequently open the window early, so, cause the door does, the, the, the PD opens, the door opens up at seven o'clock automatically, sometimes when the PD comes in, despite he'll open it earlier when he's here, but, or they'll open it earlier, but, um. Again, I, it appears it's a hit from a resident's perspective. I haven't heard anything negative about it, I've, I've heard praises on it being open again in the evenings.
Yeah, I have it as well.
Bobby, have you heard anything from your folks?
Nope, it's been pretty good.
So I think we, because we had a little time limit on the, on the hours, we do need to make a motion to make them permanent.
Well, make it permanent or go for a year. Well, we could always readdress it a year.
We can always readdress it if you say there's a problem, right? I'd say, let's just make it permanent.
I don't want to get in the wrong town if they can't come in on a Monday night.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they're gonna get you, sir.
I don't want to take them on a Monday night anymore.
I make a motion that we make those hours permanent.
Motion made, do I have a second?
I will second it.
Alright, motion made by Ms. Plansky, seconded by Mr. Gannon. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Terry?
I just missed that.
Yes.
We lost so much.
Chief, are you in here for anything?
Yes.
Two.
Yeah, I will, yep.
Two things, uh, number eight and number nine.
Yep.
Aiden, I'm gonna ask you, you okay waiting for a mo- a few more minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
You sure?
Yeah.
I, I was like, hoping it'd be quicker, but, okay.
No worries, no worries.
So why don't we take up the first one for the chief, which will be the, uh, donation, right?
Uh, number eight, the equitable sharing. He was just going to update people so that everyone knows what it is and.
So we're part of, uh, we're attached to the federal government. I guess we did a case four years ago where we seized money as a drug case. As the federal government is at times, uh, it takes a while sometimes for it to get through the bureaucracy and then through the courts and whatever. Um, and we do have the potential of getting up to eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, no decision's been made what percentage of that we'll get, if any, but that is out there. Uh, but every year I have to do a report that discloses to them how much money we got, uh, how much money we received from them. Last year, we did not receive any money, so the report reflects that. So just letting you know that that was reported to the federal government. And then, like I said, there is eleven thousand eight hundred dollars that's out there that we could get, all of, none of, or anywhere in between, and it could be next year, this year, five years from now, who knows?
And what can those fund, those come in, that comes as revenue, right?
Alright. That's it, and then, um, the next one is the Smart Trailer, uh, which is a, a speed, uh, trailer. Everybody's seen it, has the display, you know, has a radar built in and displays your speed. The Hudson Police Department bought some new machines, so they were kind enough to donate their old machine to us, assuming you're willing to accept it. It's actually up at Highway now, they're trying to get it operational, I guess it's a relay or something, but there was no cost to us to accept the machine. My guess is between batteries and, um, whatever this is, which sounds like it's gonna be, you know, it's just a power issue, so I can't imagine it's gonna be that much, but if it, you know, turns out to be something, I'll let you know. But basically, we're getting a thirty thousand dollar machine for, it'll probably cost us a thousand to fifteen hundred at the outside to get operational. And as we get speeding complaints, it would be nice to be able to put up, you know, in various places in town and, and it, not only does it display the speed, but it records all of them so we can track. Uh, so if, you know, people say, "Oh, we have a speeding issue on this street," we can run the machine and we can actually turn the display off if we don't want to let people, you know, have people trying to beat the high speed or even get their attention, where they're gonna slow down. Uh, they might, you know, they might think it's off, so we can get a good estimate of, or a good data on what is out there, as far as speeding.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Be great if we allowed cameras, huh?
Yep. I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation from the Hudson Police Department, um, of a two thousand six Smart Trailer that was valued at seventy-five hundred dollars.
I will second it.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Mr. Gannon. Any further discussion or discussion? Okay, hearing done, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Chief, I went down there and I couldn't get in the building, so. So if he found a relay, that's good, if that's what Kevin found.
Yeah, I don't know, that's what he's.
That's what I would think, I think, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I brought him the, the diagnostics board today, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Alright, let's, if we could, if nobody minds, we bring Aiden forward. Welcome, Aiden, how are ya?
Hi.
So Aiden is here as, he's been recommended as a, uh, alternative.
To the conservation commission.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Why don't you tell us a little about yourself and why you want to join the conservation?
Um, I'm a college student at New England College. I'm a junior there and I'm double majoring in environmental studies and business, business administration. I'm also the vice president of my environmental club there. And then, um, why I want to be part of the conservation is because I want to, um, have a deeper connection with my community that I live in and I have a plot at the community garden and, um, I love what they're doing and I want to be part of that.
Okay. Sounds good. So Aiden does come recommended by the Conservation Commission. They were voted on June fifth to a seven-zero vote to, um, to recommend him as an alternative. So, anybody have any questions for Aiden?
I'll make a motion to appoint Aiden McCarthy as an alternative to the Conservation Commission. Uh, we don't have any, alternates don't have a.
Alternative, yeah, no.
Alternates.
But it's effective to.
Yeah.
Effective June fif-
I think it's right there, Steve, sorry, I could have put it on the board.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Uh. Effective Ju- June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, and he will hold such office until March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine.
I second that motion.
The motion made.
I want to remind you that you need to show up at meetings, cause if you miss, what is it, three? Okay.
Okay.
Um, motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Ms. Plansky. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
So you have to get sworn in.
Thank you so much, Aiden.
So tomorrow, Aiden, I will give this to Terry, the town clerk, um, with their signatures. And then you can stop and get sworn in, as soon as she has that, you can get sworn in.
So would I get notified for, when I get sworn, like, to come in or?
By tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, it'll be in our hands.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, Aiden.
You, Aiden.
Have a good night.
You have a good one, Aiden. Appreciate it. Alright, where do we leave off here? So Aiden, duh, 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 duh.
Health officer.
Health officers.
Yes, so, um, we have a health officer, normally, we have a health officer and a deputy health officer. In the past, the, um, building inspector has been the main health officer. Um, when we hired Mr. Osborne, um, he did not have the health officer certification. Um, we felt that it was more important for him to get his building certifications done before he moves for the health officer. So Captain Paul Kelly, who's been our deputy, um, has stepped in as the health officer, um, while Mr. Osborne is finishing his building certifications and then he'll start the health officer. So we thought it would be about a year. What I would, what we failed, I failed to bring forward to you, um, and I'm very happy that the fire department said something, was the building inspector who always received a stipend for that work. Um, and so we think it's only fair that Captain Kelly, while he's in that role, receives that stipend. We'd like to go back and do that for the second quarter, um, and then going forward until at what time we bring forth Mr. Osborne's, um, designation to you.
I have just one thing, you've got it, three hundred and seventy-five a quarter, fifteen hundred quarterly, you meant yearly, right?
Yearly, annually, yes.
Yep, okay.
So we will pay him past quarter and then start in this quarter and pay him quarterly until that is ready.
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we give Officer, um, Captain Kelly that stipend until our health official, our, uh, building inspector is certified.
Effective Q two or second quarter.
Effective Q two. And moving forward until that time.
Do I have a second?
Second. We gotta get one in.
Motion made by Ms. Plansky, seconded by Ms. Queenen. Any other discuss- any discussion or further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Alright, site plan and subdivision flow chart. Ms. Klein.
Um, so, some may, may know this, um, about six months ago, um, we at the town, um, started a technical review committee. This is an opportunity for police, fire, highway, building, Joan from planning, myself, um, to meet and review plans, um, together. Because what we found is, um, generally, maybe something that police recognizes from the plans will help fire, or something fire raises from the plans will help the police. Um, it's a more integrated review of plans. Again, all we are reviewing plans for is our recommendations or questions to the planning board. That is our only function, there's no approval, there's no denial, there's no authority. We are strictly assisting the planning board.
How is this in addition to what you presented to the planning board that night I was there? This is the same thing, right?
This is the same thing, they asked for an operational flow chart.
Okay.
Um, we promised this to the planning board, so we've been working on it. Um, and that's why I wanted to bring it forward, uh, to the board, is we believe this is a finished project, although we are waiting for, uh, Lou, our town engineer, and Jane Mencara to get back to Joan. They have it, they are looking at it, but everyone else here has looked at it and, and, um, approved it. Once everyone's good with it, we'll send it to the planning board and they will, um, make any edits that they feel, um, should be done. The idea was, this is something that we can post on the website and provide to contractors and to residents on, here's the process when you're trying to get plans through the town of Litchfield, this is what happens. And so we think it'll be easier for- And so, we think it'll be easier for the contractors, um, and developers to understand the process.
So, again, this is the, the existing TRC that was created a while back to get people to collaborate on their inputs and feedback to the planning board. It just kinda formalizes the process of what they, what they follow through.
But it doesn't delay the process?
No.
And, and it's only like, oh, we looked at this and we want you to make sure about this?
I, I think what's happened in the past is stuff is coming to the planning board without any department head of responsibility, having an opportunity to look at it. This is insurance of those department heads had an opportunity to look at it, they can respond. And there's no more going, well, I never saw it, cause it never got sent to me.
Right.
If anything.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's good. I think it's, I, I like what Kim said, that it's, you know, it's just what they're seeing as opposed to they have any authority. I, I don't want them to stop the planning board from doing their job or keep people waiting.
They've always been required to provide feedback, but they, again, I think some, some of it's, like, I think fire has fallen through the, through the whole, through the whole a couple of times when things have been.
And fire does actua- fire actually has authority.
They do, cause of.
By state statute, fire has authority over all life-saving. So, you can't approve a plan.
So, why do they not sit on a planning board, then?
They never have. I don't know any.
I'm just curious. I mean, if they have authority to make decisions within the planning board, they probably should be on the planning board.
Well, then you would have, then that argument could be extended to the building inspector would have to be on the planning board, too.
Right, he has statute over the building, as does police over.
So, these are staff positions that are in the town, doing function at town.
Yep.
Providing technical feedback to the planning board to make, as part of their assessment and their decision.
But, but it's one committee sitting in one meeting, so they could review it all together.
And they're all together.
No, not committee. One meeting.
Not a committee, cause then they'd, then they'd need minutes and they'd have to be videoed and all that kinda stuff.
They're performing their town.
Everything they said would be available for people to see.
Before, what would happen is you'd have to be sneaking it. It was ran to all the different departments. Now, they're all sitting together.
Or sending an email and then they didn't read the email, good, and time expired and they didn't do it.
Right. There, there's no internal committee of sta- so you could call, you could have staff, your town employees, together as a committee, call it whatever you want. There's no requirement by ninety-one A for them to have minutes and agendas. It's not a public, yeah. It's just a staff committee.
I mean, we call it T, we call it the Technical Review Committee, so, I just, let's not confuse it of a.
Change to Board.
These are, these are, these are paid town staff folks that are doing their job and making sure that their feedback gets to the planning board as they go to review and make their decisions.
It'll save time for them.
Well, it definitely saves time.
The only thing is, the only other hiccup I saw was sometimes NRPC didn't get the drawing until five days before. They didn't have time. Does that solve anything here or not really?
So, when it comes into Joan.
Yeah.
Um, unless Joan decides it needs a variance, cause if, if something comes in and, and Joan and Matt look at it and it requires a variance, now it's over, right? It's gotta go to the zoning board before it comes.
Yep.
If it doesn't, it will go from Joan to Conservation, the town engineer, Jay, and the technical review, all at the same time. Boom, 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 boom. Cause we all comment, right? Conservation comments, Jay comments, Lou comments, we comment.
Yep.
Um, and then it also goes over to nine one one, because if it needs addresses, they have to be notified right away, the state.
Um. Is everybody CCing each other in here so they all can like, read the feedback from everybody else or are they working?
They're together.
They're together.
Oh, it's an actual meeting?
They're together, yep.
Well, you said the email goes out.
Oh, we weren't meeting with Conservation. No, you're right. You're right, Kim. The plans go to each.
So, everybody gets a plan or email?
But we're not meeting to go over it at the, the technical reviews meeting, COMCOM's meeting and their meeting.
So, you do your meet, I'm not sure if you're on Conservation anymore. So, Conservation does their meeting. And then where do their comments go?
To the planning board. Back to Joan, to the planning board.
So, everyone's doing their silo, but they're doing their piece.
Right.
Yep.
Or they don't comment, they say it's fine.
And we've made a promise.
It was only a comment. It was only a review of what you see. It's only advisory. It's that, this is what we see. This is what we see for wetlands. This is what we, we ask that you do so that the wetlands are, are taken care of. This is what we ask that you do, you know, when things are within this part of, of, you know, we, we just make sure that the the property is.
Our promise to the planning board is, so generally, it's always twenty-one days before it gets scheduled to the planning board. We are getting our review done within those twenty-one days. That's what we have promised.
Okay, cause again, sometimes we should just get it like, five days before, you know? Or, or not us. We'd be in the drawing room there. But like, NRPC would get it and would they be like, rush, you know, to get it through.
Yeah, the town really should stick to the statutory requirement, because if you rush things, that's when things get dropped. I, you have a twenty-one day grace. I would um, use the twenty-one days for all the, everyone to look at it. Um, but, so, on from there, we've tried to put notes and things so that the contractors in the, the, um, you could have a resident, um, go through this, that they understand, once it goes to the building inspector, what happens? Once it's approved by the, uh, planning board, what happens? And so, Matt helped with the second portion of this. You can go for a building permit and then your electrical and your mechanical, or you can go for a foundation only and what you need, when the land cha- uh, use change tax gets assessed, when you need your septic design. So, that's the second page of this, which is really meant to help them, not the planning board as much.
It's helpful, too, because they come in unexpectedly and they're lining up their finances before the paperwork's done. So, this gives them the timeline, cause then they're rushing, cause they need the, the loan right away.
Right.
Yeah, perfect. It'll help.
Any other comments? Thank you, Kim. Uh, moving on to the P three assessment, joint loss, the joint loss.
Joint loss, sorry.
This is a weird name, committee, isn't it?
Thinking about Wonky Boy.
Just thinking of Karen.
So, um, with, every year, um, about this time, there's, um, a process called our P three assessments. And so, these are assessments that I fill out with Primex. Um, and as long as we have done all of the requirements, we receive a discount on our workers' comp and our property and liability insurance the following year. Um, one of those requirements is having a joint loss committee. And so, my sincere thanks to Vicki, um, because about a year ago, Vicki took over the joint loss, um, and did wonderful things with it. So, the joint loss is mostly made up of employees, not department heads, not me, not, um, these are employees in departments. And they, because they're looking at things with a different eye than we are. They are able to look and see if there are safety requirements as they are performing their jobs. Um, and so, they help to promote workplace safety, um, helpfully, hopefully, prevent accidents and injuries. Um, they are given information on injuries that have occurred, not names, nothing that's HIPAA violated. Um, and then they can help review those injuries and maybe help us come up with different ways to um, address them or make it a safer environment. Um, so, they mu- the joint loss committee must meet at least quarterly. And under Vicki, uh, she did a phenomenal job. We got representatives from each department. Um, they had their meetings, they had their votes, um, which made my process with the P three assessment so much easier. Then there are other parts of the P three assessments, um, that I do handle. And that is assigning training. So, assigning training to all our employees. Um, all our employees means everyone across the board, department heads, police officers, fire personnel, everyone. Um, so, the first quarter, because one hadn't been done in a number of years, we did, uh, training on har- harassment.
So, riveting.
John gets it.
Is that sarcasm?
Yeah, I was gonna say it was riveting.
And, uh, the second one was social media ethics. Um, riveting. And so, um, we work, we have a program, Primex has supplied us a program that, um, is very easy to work with. Um, John assisted us in getting everyone's email addresses, so I can go into the program, I can assign the training. It goes out to everyone's email address. Um, and then Karen actually collects the certificates to make sure that, um, they have done it, so it's really a group effort. Um, during the P three assessment this year, they decided, um, Primex is making cybersecurity a big item, so, third quarter, everybody will have a cybersecurity basics training. Um, they also want a preventing employment discrimination for managers. So, all the department heads will have to do both, unfortunately. Um, but, working with the Primex, making sure that we're getting the trainings assigned, that they, um, want done, really helps, um, in us getting discounts off of our insurance. So, I mean, that's, that's all we can do. One of the items that.
What is the discount that we get?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, and how much does that amount to?
Well, so, like, our, uh, workman's comp. I can get the figures for you. I forget what our property and liability was last year. Nah. Yeah, I don't wanna say off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, so additionally, um, Primex has asked that we, they can ask us to create policy. And one of the policies they've asked for is a post-traumatic stress policy. Fire and police really have a policy that deals with them and they have officers on each that are trained. What we are missing is a post-traumatic policy for town staff and highway. And many of the towns, and after I started researching it, found that most of them use this Granite State Critical Incident, um, which is a team that is in the Granite State that works at us, uh, St. Joseph's Hospital. They're connected with St. Joseph's Hospital. They provide this free. Um, it's like a twenty-four hour, if anyone, anyone has ever dealt with an EAP, and, you know, you call your EAP and you get help. This is very similar, only it's specifically related to events that would create, create stress, so.
In the, in the office place?
In the town, yes, so.
Okay.
Something related to your work.
Okay.
Um, so, I reached out, um, and they, Primex gave us a draft. I reached out to Granite State, um, the Granite State Incident Team. They have a kind of educational system you have to go through, um, to learn about it before they will sign you up to receive it. Um, so, we're gonna work on that and bring that back, because next year, when I go through the P three, this is gonna be one of the things we're gonna ask for, so, um, that's how we've kinda learned that the system has worked. They recommend it the first year and the next year they ask for it. Um, and so, working with the chief, we did discuss, you know, we could always fall back and use the police and the fire personnel that are trained in it. The only downfall of that is sometimes something might happen and maybe your town staff doesn't want it to be someone they know.
Uh-huh, that makes sense, too.
So, we should have someone that is, you know, outside of the process, outside of the town.
How does that kick in for the police and fire? Like, we've had fires where we've lost citizens and firemen that were there. Do they reach out to the firefighters that were at the location?
They.
The same thing with the fatality that happened with the motorcycle, um, on Charles Bancroft, that officers went to. Uh, do they get reached out to by these PTSD trainee, trainers in, do you know how it works?
So, I, my, I only had a conversation, John, my, and Elmore, I only had a conversation with the chief. They have two officers here that are trained in the, in the critical response. Um, so, when they are debriefing, they have those two officers that are trained in this that can assist the, their officers. Is that cor- correct, John, as?
That's my understanding. I think that's how the fire service works, too. I, I just.
I believe so.
I just don't put the arrow in the fire service.
Yeah. So long as they have that available and then it's, it's not just something that's like, like riveting, you know, but, but it, this is like a real thing that people, you know.
I think the, the idea is that, and especially in public safety, the brotherhood, you know, the camaraderie, they have, they all look out for each other and they look for signs and they try to help each other, but I think there's, you know, beyond that, there's outside help they can get, do when they need it. Um, I know that when we've had events before, I've seen them have little like, debriefs and talk about, talk it through to try to get through the, the, the tra- the trauma of the, of the event itself, but also to educate and where we make mistakes and where we do better.
Right.
That kinda stuff, or what, or, there's nothing you could've done. This is, you did all these things correct. The result's the result, right, kinda thing, so.
Yeah.
When I was in EMT, when I was in EMT, um, we went through that almost weekly, so. It, it helps to talk about it. But sometimes, you know, all these big guys and big gals, they don't wanna talk about their stuff. They'll take it home with them.
But it could be for the town. I mean, it could be a death.
We're looking for that. We're looking for not having to.
Right, so, it could be, we're, we all work so closely together. It could be one of us has an accident and passes, God forbid.
God forbid, yep.
And that could be a post-traumatic for the staff here. Um, so, this gives them something similar to the police and the fire, but.
There's no cost associated with it.
There is no cost. It's a free, so, we'll work on that policy, um, and bring that forward. The other thing that we need to do is get an updated facilities report. And what I found was, the departments did a facilities report, um, last spring. So, like, Highway did their facilities and what we missed was, we need one from Conservation and we need one from Recreation. So, those facilities have not been done. And whether they are comfortable doing their own or whether they want, like, the building inspector to help them or some other staff member. Like, I know it might be difficult for rec to get out and be able to do all their properties. Um, we can help them, but we need to get those properties done, cause they have not been done.
We, Conservation does them every year.
Uh, okay.
There's, there's reports that they submit every year of all the properties.
Does that come to the town or to Conservation?
Yeah.
It comes from Conservation to the town. I'll, I'll ask Jason or, um, Matt. You're talking about property evaluations.
Safety reports, yeah.
Safety reports, okay.
Mm-hmm. They're supposed to go to the joint loss, so, I haven't seen any in the drive and Vicki's didn't have any, so.
Okay, maybe not.
Um.
Should be easier to do that.
I think there's some insurance reports. Maybe that's what they're submitting.
There's also requirements by the state, things we have to do for the state as well. That's what we're doing.
That could be.
What they're doing, that's what we're used to do.
But this is specific around safety issues or or non-safety issues?
Right, you have to go and do an assessment of each property um and identify any hazards or potential safety issues and record those. They, all those plans get put together, they get brought to the board. We figure out what is most timely and what is most cost-effective. And we're supposed to knock, you know.
I would think.
Complete items.
The rec would probably definitely want Matt's assistance because of the buildings that they have and there could be electricity and all that, and when you're working with that, kinda get blinded by what you're doing and what's around you.
Right, and, yeah, and it can be time-consuming for them.
Yeah, also what I'd do is put more on Matt's plate, but it'd be also good for him to review all of our facilities and give some feedback.
Yes, and um and he's doing this one, he does, um Highway does Highway, um Transfer Station does Transfer Station. So we hope to have that updated for January of twenty twenty-six. Officer Rebecca Frula, I can never say it, Frula, has offered to take over Vicky's place. So I'm very excited, um the chief and I are gonna um meet with her um coming up and she'll take over the joint loss, um which will be a great help.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Thank you for, Vicky, for running with this for so long.
She was a lifesaver.
She could retire from the library, did you tell her she can't retire from this?
I tried, but she wasn't buying it. She wasn't buying it.
Kim showed up with gifts and everything special for her, but I didn't see her.
She didn't bite, huh?
She wasn't biting.
There's no extra, we'll take this more of a report, right?
No, I just wanted to inform you, we did pass the P three, so we've got it for twenty twenty-six.
And it's ten percent, and you're gonna let me know about how much that is, cause it's certainly worth it, yep.
All right, next up is uh something we tabled from last uh two weeks ago, the finance HR software upgrades. I can lay it out a little bit quickly again, so the town is still operating on a finance package that dates back to the late eighties, nineteen eighties. The company had informed us a while back that they weren't gonna be making much more investments in it, but they thought there would still be some long runways, but the payroll system, which we transitioned two years ago, I think it's been two years at this point, was the first one that we were told that they weren't gonna invest in, so we we transitioned to the the payroll system into the G-Works platform successfully, uh without any issues. We've been informed just recently that they are no longer making any more investments or fixes to the current program. They don't know how long they're gonna keep the package running, and so we are now against the law, we have to make a decision. In the previous uh e- exercises around the same topic, we looked at all the packages, they're grossly more expensive. Things off the shelf, don't customize to New Hampshire laws and things that we have to have for reporting. The G-Works platform is New Hampshire-focused, it it is based out of the company called BMSI that was, they bought all the BMSI assets, they cloudized it. So this would be a fairly easy transition for us to migrate our existing data into this platform and then continuing using something that we're very familiar with from a procedural workflow perspective, again, cause it lines up with what we currently do in payroll today.
So what's, G-Works Finance Hub, is it going to G-Works Core overview, is that the replacement?
No, Core overview, that was, that was, in the actual, that was a link to to that actually there.
Yeah.
So the Finance Hub will replace our current assets, um sorry, our debts and liabilities or whatever they call it.
General ledger.
General ledger and um that, so that replaces that. The HR hub actually gets a little more, it's a bolt-on to payroll, it gets some more integration between the two systems, cause today it's still, we gotta move files manually. This will integrate it all together.
And what's, what's the new packages or what's the new?
H, it's called Finance Hub and HR Hub, those are the two packages.
Oh, okay, G-Works Finance Hub.
Those links were, there was.
They won't work for you.
So that's the new name of the applications, gotcha. So they just, they live their life and they're being sunsetted and you really have no choice.
Sunsetted, yeah, and and what we found out in our last conversation is, everybody who used to support the platform isn't longer there. So the ones that were putting the Band-Aids in the gum and the Bailey White, they all left. Um and they're only making investments in the their cloud offering, which is this.
Yeah, we have no choice.
So we really don't have a lot of choice, I hate to say it that way, but we don't have a lot of choice. And again, I rese, we, Karen White, um for a couple of different years was looking for different packages to try to replace our current platform. Every pack, which was either gonna be three times what we already pay, had a lot more bells, so we don't need. This one, again, is sort of tailored to what we have today, cause it's based on the same core that we used to have.
So Karen likes the hub and you like the HR hub?
Yeah, so the HR hub, um and I think this goes back a little bit to the um background policy, most of our policies. So we don't have a real HR system that says when an employee starts working, they do this, 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 and this. There's no, there's a lot of email back and forth, there's policies that get missed, there's things. You really need an HR system, both for the employee and for the management. The other thing is the, I, it, you know, our employees can't see their payroll information, like, you know, if I wanted to say, oh, what was my check, you know, four weeks ago, I've gotta go to Heather and she'll, you know what I mean? So this gives them a platform for the employees as well. And then we can work and see how we work trainings through that, cause you can do trainings through it, you can do a whole bunch through that. That is not something we have now. John actually built some shared portals, and we tried to create an HR hub of our own in the portals, it doesn't really work as well. So we think it's.
John's maintaining something, it's homegrown, not off the shelf. So off the shelf, somebody else supports it and they'll manage it, well, you'll manage it, but they'll.
Right, and this will integrate, so you'll have the payroll data coming in and yeah. People will be able to fill out, say, you know, your W nine and it will go right into the system and yeah, it's gonna be a lot easier for um Heather, Karen, and I to manage the the HR side of things.
Yeah, I think there's um, with regards to our current payroll system too, what I've read in their roadmap is that they're talking about merging into HR Hub, so it comes one cost versus two separate costs, so there may be savings down the road, but not right now.
When are you expecting to go live with this?
I, like, we need to get approval to do it first.
Well, but besides that, I see that we have a cost here on the training.
You don't wanna be doing it when you are issuing um your W nine, your tax, your W two, so you don't wanna be. So.
Well, the W nine, so W nine, that all comes out of payroll today, so that's not gonna, that's not gonna get touched immediately, this will impact.
I'm thinking time-wise, time-wise for Heather and Karen, I, the year end is so you don't wanna be doing it when we're going through the financial audit, which is right now. And you don't wanna be doing it when we're going through year end and, you know, tax time, so really, this is the best window now.
Yeah, and I think um what they typically wanna do is they wanna run in parallel, so we'll basically run parallel books, and then we'll close out the old books and then re-migrate or reconcile a date and then in twenty twenty-six, it's a full system. So when I spoke to them a week or two, two weeks ago, uh we were, we'd be on a waiting list to get into the system, but they were talking about it being less than, I think he said sixty days, the startup project. Completion is like three weeks.
So the finance portion is currently in the budget?
No.
It says current budget fifty-nine eleven.
Oh, sorry.
For the finance.
That's the annual fee.
That's the annual.
That's the annual fee, yep, but the HR software is not, and it's, annual fees are actually higher than finance.
Yeah, it, they, most of them will go into the cloud, so what's happening is we're not paying for the backend services. They're bringing, they're hosting it themselves, so it's always a little more expensive.
So, but it's seven thousand dollars that we don't have in the budget right now.
We have, correct, so what I'm proposing is that we uh, we can tap into my fund to fund the project to get it started. And then in the twenty twenty-six budget, we have to reset the the numbers to be correct. So it would be the startup twenty-five hundred, and then we'll transition to annual fees? So that's still be determined right now at sixty-three hundred dollars, we're, I'm trying to, I'm trying to negotiate with them not to do that, cause we don't have to be operational. So it'll be a pro rate annual fee, but what I'm asking for is the authorization to move forward and for the full month that's identified here, and then hopefully we'll come in half if not.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. The existing software is being sunsetted.
Correct.
But we're adding a new. Oh, I agree, and you're gonna be in parallel paying for two. With the HR hub, cause we didn't have an HR hub.
We didn't have a HR hub, and again, this, the HR hub will give us some benefits because it ties the systems together that we don't have today. Right now, your BMSI, is that all local on purpose? Yeah, a hundred percent.
So we're going from fifty-nine eleven to twelve thousand, thirteen thousand dollars, basically.
So we always measure in dollars, and I understand that, but this is gonna improve efficiency in the office as well, right, you have to think about that. But again, I know we deal with the money. But if you're gaining more time in the office because you're not doing.
You're also putting it in the clouds, and now John's not babysitting and managing it and worrying about the hardware. Now it becomes an OpEx expense where.
Well, that's the finance part of it, that's the finance part of it.
So productivity is a good return on investment, but I still understand the financial piece, I know, we gotta get through that piece. But that's part of a decision too.
That's four hundred dollars more a year, that's, that's certainly not a big jump, but now all of a sudden we've got another seven thousand for the HR hub.
Yeah, I think the question, which I have to get the answer from them, if they sunset the current payroll and it moves all into the hub, that reduces the payroll cost and moves into one, so at that point it would be, it would be equal. And I'll get clarification on that, but. I'm not even sure if Bruce is even there anymore.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Who does our payroll right now?
Uh, it's the same company, SG Works.
Heather processes it.
Yeah, Heather processes it today, um there's an application called, it's Web HR is what they call it today. But like I said, when I've been talking to these, the the account team, they told me that payroll will be migrating off, so again, it looks like it may be a wash. So I'm waiting for an updated quote, but this is what we were told originally, that's why we brought forward it, by the way. Should we get an updated quote before we approve it? So we know what we're approving? I'm just not getting answers right now.
Right, our concern is we wanna get on the sixty-day wait to, because if we get too late, we don't wanna be implementing it at year end.
I mean, this is the, this is the, this is the extent of the exposure for this year. And again, I'm, I'm.
And absolutely it needs to be done, you know, I understand that, I just think that you're gonna be sitting in budget committee and they're gonna be looking at what, what for your twenty twenty-five budget was fifty-nine eleven is now gonna be more than double that.
And if we do to fix any of the, any of the aging systems we have in this building, anything causes an expense. It's the unfortunate part. And if you don't replace them, you support them yourself until they fail. We can't, they're running on, it's running on, um it's on file services, so it's um hold it there, that file database, I can't remember the name of it anymore.
Like Access.
Not it, no, it's almost. But it's not even a database, it's in a file for, flat file format database. Like I, this is the only place I still deal with it is this one here.
Yeah, yeah, that's ancient.
So can we vote to just do the finance part of it and then get more information on the hub part? Or do you have to take them both?
I'm taking, I don't have to take them both, no, but um.
Finance needs to be taken care of immediately, pretty much, right? Cause you're currently using a system that's, that's gone or going shortly. But the hub is a new.
It's, it's new, yeah, it's new, it's an add-on, um that we have, like I said, we can, if you wanna authorize the first half, get that in the pipeline, I can go back and get clarification on the hub side.
Exactly what it gives.
Is it actually.
In addition.
If it does, does that mean I'm not paying that service fee anymore?
And what is that service fee versus this, that would be good to know, yes, can we do the first part? Cause I wanna get.
We've already paid the fifty-nine eleven.
Yeah, there's no, um, that's why I'm trying to ask for, look, if we aren't gonna go, we're gonna go in parallel and do deployment, I'll pay you know, the one-time training and the fee and all that and the conversion fee.
Yeah.
And then the addition.
Be a pro rated cost for the year, not for the full year.
Right, which would be the difference between those two numbers.
So it'll be less than what out here by the end, but we have the full cost coming in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I just would wanna know for another seven thousand dollars, what's in the, what's so much more valuable to add all of that in?
Yeah.
And you're right, if it does payroll and payroll is costing us five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, when you look at the stuff, it talks about payroll.
Then you're talking about the two thousand.
Cause the web hub, the web payroll system was their first VoIP, VoIP, that was their first generation, and we're talking about moving, they're migrating it over. But we lost contact with the person originally owned, that was one of the founders of BMSI, he's not been answering anything anymore. So I talked, like I said, I think last week I talked to their, their sales executive team about it and was more focused on um the finance hub than anything else at this point, so.
Okay.
So I'll get clarity for it, cause we're supposed to send you a little proposal. So if you, if the board wants to go ahead and just approve the first half, um as it is right now, I can come back with the second half at the next meeting if I get those updates.
I'd make a motion that we accept the first half so that you could get on the list.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. Plasky, seconded by Ms. Kreenen. Any other discussion? Bob, any thoughts?
No, I think it's the right thing to do.
And compliance issues too, you're getting more modern, right?
Yeah.
Cause we have government regulations, is this in the new software?
Yes.
Cause that's one of the challenges.
I'm assuming. Well, I'm not wanna assume, I wanna see what we're getting for seven thousand dollars.
Files is a security issue, I'd like a database, so.
But it is like, it's a no. If it's the payroll and stuff too, John, I just, I was wondering.
Yeah, I made a call again this morning, but I didn't get a return call today, so I was hoping to have that answered, cause that was the one open question I had still.
So do we get a second?
Yes.
Maybe a second, any other discussion?
Here are none, for the approval of the uh Finance Hub for sixty-three hundred dollars, with starter fees of twelve fifty. Do I have, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same, motion carries four zero one. All right, and I'll update it in the next meeting, um and this is clarification, these funds will be coming out of the technical revolving fund. That's how they pose it, so. All right, uh next up will be policy review, background check, the note here is, we're gonna table it. Uh, we started talking about it last time, I think Kim has found other issues that we gotta look through, so between legal and searching other communities and what they do, I think we just wanna get a little more time, so we're gonna table if there's no objections.
Sounds like the right thing to do.
I'm sure it's open a can of worms, we gotta go through it, so.
Yep.
All right, so move on to the next one, will be the fraud policy. I know we had a lot of discussion in the last meeting, I think we went to have some questions asked by legal. I think at this point, I think the recommendation is we approve as it is, but I'll let Ms. Connor share her findings.
Yes, so as the board requested, I did um speak with legal counsel, we um went back and forth at length. The question um remains, the, well, the answer remains the same. Their um only way to remove an employee or a staff member is by a vote of the Board of Selectmen. E- even if a selectman had to recuse themselves, it would still require a majority vote. There's no if, ands, buts, roundabout. There's no if, ands, buts, roundabout, nothing. There's no remedy for that, unfortunately, under the current laws. So, um, the thought, you know, eh, was that if whatever happened was egregious enough, then the board, the remaining members would make the right decision. That's at least how, um, we believe the law feels, but.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, for throw in, I'm not gonna pass a bad policy. It's in nine times, and I do believe who's the judges, who's watching, the judges are the fox and the chickens, you can't be both. So, that's how I'm going to vote. I think it's a flawed thing. Um, and there's also a section in here where a person can be monitored by police, you know, surveillance kinda thing, being quiet for thirty days, how can you do that? How can the boards do that if a person is sitting?
On the board.
It's, yeah, so again, it violates that, even that policy in there, so. Uh, there's also a part where we have to be careful because the police answers to the Board of Selectmen, and there's a, somewhere in here where it's the police, the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator will have to work together. So again, it's just a very messy fraud policy, and I'm not gonna pass that policy, so that's my feeling. But you do what you want.
Unfortunately, I mean, the way that, you know, town government is set up. And it, it's like this with any government function, yes, the police report to you. It, the police are only investigating when there's a crime. You need to remember that if the police found a crime, regardless of what the Board of Selectmen says.
Yep.
It supersedes.
The chief has a, a responsibility, an oath to, you know, uphold, and so he's not gonna be asking the board if he can press charges. That's just not how it works.
Scenario, but again, Town Admin also makes decisions based on board recommendations as well. It's all littered through here.
It's a little different, it's a little different with me.
Only way to fix it.
I think we know.
But I wanna say for the public, the only way to fix it, to leave it, is not to have an employee be on the Board of Selectmen. Then this works, but I don't see another way to make it work. So you have a decision to make whether you, which way you wanna go.
I think you're, um, it's noted.
It was, it was noted last week, not this week.
But noted again.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the fraud policy as written.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Ms. Plansky, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Staying, motion carries three, two, zero. Next is going to be cash receipts policy, this is gonna be a first read, that we're gonna approve in July fourteenth meeting, hopefully.
So, um, the cash receipts policy, this is a, an important policy, um, because not only does this dictate the cash between departments and the cash between the residents and the departments and how that flows, but this also deals with who can touch town cash. So, you know, boards and commissions, they can have designated people and desi, but they have to submit reports and things like that. Um, you can't have just everybody going out and like collecting donations on behalf of the town. Because what you do is you lose control. And so then, you know, some committee member somewhere might be out collecting something on behalf of the town, and if it doesn't reach the town, that is, that's an audit problem. And, and the town will be, um, seen for that, um, cited. So, this is a very strict policy, I, I've, I've seen them this strict, I've seen them a little more relaxed, but, um, Karen and I, um, Legal, we're all looking at it to just make sure that we've covered all our bases. Um, and if we feel there's any changes that need to be brought forth, we'll bring them, um, on July fourteenth. But this is a pretty good policy, one of the better ones that I've seen.
So we get until the fourteenth?
Yeah, to look it over and see if you have any changes or questions or, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, do we know why it hasn't been reviewed in the last five years? Or the policy states that it needs to be reviewed at least every two years?
I found that with more than one.
Oh, I, I know.
And so I think you had, you had a few things, you had changes in town administrators. Um, COVID, you also, I, I think, like I said, this is a very good policy. I, I, you, I doubt very much that you've had problems resulting from this.
Not yet, but now we've talked about it, we will.
And if you did.
Murphy's Law.
The auditors would generally be the ones to find those. And I haven't, we haven't had any audit points, so, you know, citations, so.
This po, this policy came directly after the, uh, Seymour case.
That's a lot, one of the reasons why I think it's so strict. It is stricter than others I've seen.
Well, that's.
But that's good.
That's what was going on, though, was passing money from one place to the other.
So this is an existing one? This isn't something new?
Nope.
So, but.
And you've got made, like, basically no changes to it, cause you thought it was good?
Uh, no, uh, we're just putting it out here for a first read, we haven't finished our review of it yet.
So you review it also, and if you have any recommendations or suggestions, bring it back to me.
So on audits, I've just seen that the person taking in money shouldn't be the one also writing checks, or, you know what I mean? The separation of duties, right?
Yes.
To make sure that.
Yes, and we have, um, eh, that is always more difficult when you have limited number of staff, right? So, and sometimes people don't understand that you need heads, different heads, just because people cannot be doing the same thing, right? You have to have that separation. Um, we have excellent separation. Donna does a lot, and Donna does, you know, all the impact fees and as far as billing them. Um, and the land use change tax, Heather reviews it second, you know, posts it, Karen reconciles it. Separation, you have to have those three separations. Um, it works out, it works out well. You lose one of those positions and now you've got a problem.
All right.
So, um, I think it's been very well-run.
All right, so July fourteenth, come with your recommendations. If you have any, if you find anything, obviously send them over to Kim to.
Yeah, I'd ask questions first.
Consolidate them all and.
I do have a question on the fraud policy, only because people are supposed to sign it. It says chairpersons, it says employees, supervisors, just to make sure people did that. It's supposed to be done yearly, I think.
Yes, we will get it.
Sure that gets.
Once we get it signed from, by you folks at the next meeting, you know, we'll clean it up, get it signed by you folks, we'll send it out to everyone and make sure everybody signs.
Do you mean chair, like, subcommittee chairs? I mean, cause I'm thinking, I haven't signed one of these. That's what I mean.
That's one of my concerns is that, I don't think, in the past, I think maybe employees have done it, but I don't think everyone's done it, and I think we will do everybody.
We need to extend.
It says all managers, supervisors, and chairperson, so that's what I went, hmm.
So just the chairs or every member?
I think it says, it says chairperson, it's on page three, it's in gray, it's the only thing in gray. I don't remember ever signing one, but.
I don't think it hurts to do.
Like, I don't know if that's that one. All right, so just, that, that's just mechanical.
Cause their acknowledgement is really making them aware of, they're, they're signing that they're aware of the policy. So I don't think doing that with everybody is a problem. It just makes everyone that serves on a board or a commission aware of the policy.
All right, so going back to the topic, we're on the cash receipts, we're all in agreement. Feedback to Kim, if you have any feedback prior to our next meeting, or July, July fourteenth meeting.
Same thing with personnel.
So personnel policy, same things, first read, review, get back. I think it's more involved with personnel policy, I believe the department heads are reviewing it also.
Yes.
Feedback to Kim.
So department heads are going through the personnel policy, um, and they are supposed to have, um, recommendations, uh, to me by the end of July. This is a huge animal. Um, it really is. Um, probably one of the largest I've seen, I think there's some dissection that needs to happen, maybe some important things. Generally, you see harassment as a separate policy, it's, it's in here, I don't like that. I'd like to take it out. Um, so I think we need to reorganize it and put some, um, like things together.
Can you get access to other towns, what they use there?
I do, I have some that I'm looking through and.
That'll certainly help.
Um, but this is a, a big, a big policy, so.
Now, the department heads looked at it last year too, right?
Only two.
I was just gonna ask that.
Only two looked at it. Um, and the changes that were recommended were mostly around earned time. I'm looking at it with a different light.
Okay. Some more to come.
Yeah.
There's a lot, if you could break some of it out, that would be.
Yeah, it's a big beast, yeah.
All right, so by, we'll, we'll have feedback.
August eleventh.
August eleventh, take your time, look at it. It is a long document and it does cover a lot of topics. I know when it was originally created, it, it was modeled after other communities, but that was a long time ago too, so.
And, and it's been added to and, and, yeah, so it's grown.
Again, like I said earlier, any feedback, send it over to Kim, so she can consolidate it. All right, moving on to the next one would be the addition, the business we added at the beginning of the meeting. I think it's funding for the upcoming celebrations.
Yep.
Yep.
So we actually had a, a quick conversation with Kim today, we're talking about, um, there's a couple of different funds that we may be able to use for the two-hundred-and-seventy-fifth celebration. So Kim was kind enough to dig up the information.
Are these the grants and stuff?
No.
These are grants.
There are grants that are out there as well, a ton of them.
Um, so if they, when I meet with Marian, I'll make sure that we go through the grant process because you can't apply for a grant without coming to the board.
So Marian's gonna talk about that to, with you when she comes in with your meeting with you, cause I actually brought it up to her, and then they told me they had sat in a meeting for the two-hundred-and-seventy-fifth, um, and that they told them a bunch of grants that were made available, so yeah, there's a lot of money out there that we could have access to.
And so if they need help, there's, um, many of us.
She's gonna.
Um, there's many of us that, right.
Somebody else that's on there used to do grants as well, who is it? Was it Gail?
Gail.
Yeah, Gail.
Probably Gail from her.
Yep.
Her school district days, yeah.
Yep, so.
She would have, yeah.
So they won't need all of that, but they, and they will, you can make Marian aware that if, if they get started, they do, just need to bring it to the board.
Yeah, so there's, um, uh, financial management policy. Um, you have to come, you have to ask the board permission to apply for the grant. Once we receive the grant, there's a public hearing process, and the board knows the whole deal. Um.
There's what, four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars in the fund?
Yes, so, um, when Steve and I were talking earlier today, there's, there's two funds. One is, sits with the treasurer. And what we believe is that that was leftover money from years ago when seventy-five, seventy?
Two-fiftieth.
Yeah. Um, and that's been sitting there, but that sits with the treasurer, that's easier. Um, you know, a request can come in as long as the committee has approved it, um, and it's authorized to approve those by you folks. Karen can pay, you know, and the treasurer can pay from that fund. The other one that sits with the trustee of the trust funds was actually created at deliberative by warrant article. That is more difficult because that requires not only a majority vote by the Board of Selectmen to pay it, but you have to have a public hearing. So.
We can do that in a meeting.
Say, spend the one with the treasurer first. Right, and then if there are, if there's fundraisers or receipts that come in, um, put it in the account with the treasurer. Because the only thing that can go into the expendable trust fund is either by warrant or a major donation after a public hearing and accepted by you folks. So, in order for the committee to kinda go without getting hung up by the Board of Selectmen, I would say we use that treasurer's account.
Deposit into.
To deposit into and spend from, and draw from first.
So then come March, we could put on the ballot to use the expendable trust fund?
You don't have to, you can do a public hearing.
Right.
Public hearing.
Which is not really a heavy.
Or.
That's not a heavy lift.
No, that's, that's true, just a public hearing, that's it. I was thinking we had to do a.
But wa, but to put into it is a warrant article.
But to pull from it, some thinking, let's just eventually close it out and roll it over to the town treasurer.
To close it out is a warrant article.
Yeah. Utilize from it and bring it down to like a dollar?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what.
Is a, is a, yes.
Just a town meeting?
Yeah.
We, we could have a, couldn't we have a public hearing and take the funds from there and roll it into the treasurer's account?
Are you closing?
No, you're gonna close the account, you can't.
Leave a dollar in there.
Oh, yeah, you can't close it without a warrant article.
Hearing with the intent that we're gonna take this move, money and move it into the treasurer's account, so we have access to it easier, obviously. And pay down the, the expenses of the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth.
Mm-hmm, it would be nice to get a warrant article, if we could look at some of these accounts that are like a hundred bucks here or whatever, there's some small ones.
Cleaning.
To clean, to clean some house, cause I know like the farmland fund, we're gonna end up with a thousand dollars sitting there that can end up being moved. Kim and I talked to conservation, that would be a good, a good warrant article, and then close that account. Um, that would be a warrant article, I wonder if we, if there's a way of consolidating some of those.
On the back, on the back page, I put all the special funds.
Maybe consolidate them, the ones that we can get rid of and close some bank accounts. Cause everything that's there has to be audited, everything that's there, it would be a warrant article, I'm not saying not a warrant article. I'm saying do a warrant article to get rid of some of them.
Well, a lot of these were just created.
Right, you, they are, so if they're created by warrant article, they're for a specific purpose.
I, I'm not saying, right, but there's like seventeen dollars sitting in account for gravestone repair that was donated. And that, so we have a, an account for that, is that correct?
Yeah, you can't get rid of a donated.
Right.
You have to use it to then repair it to sell before you run it down.
Right.
Yeah, donated is, is created by a specific donation by a specific person, and that can only be closed once the money is spent for that purpose.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any of these funds, I think they can be shut down.
I, I don't either.
No.
No, just the one.
Just, uh, even, this is a celebration fund would be the only one I would think it is.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that would be the only one, but we, we have a purpose for it, it was intended for the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth. So it makes sense to just get the money moved over. Again, I would probably say do that sooner than later, just have a public hearing, that we're gonna transfer funds from this fund to that fund in support of the upcoming two-hundred-and-seventy-fifth, which will be on this day in two thousand twenty. the upcoming two hundred and thirty fifth, which will be on this day in two thousand twenty-six.
Yep, yep.
You know.
Okay, I was just wondering if we could do house cleaning at the same time.
Okay, I'll let you know after I meet with Marian and we.
Yeah, if anyone agrees, I mean, it's.
I mean, I kinda gave you a summary of, of the, how the money came to be on the pages, just for your.
Perfect sense.
Yeah, it'd be great to have it so they can get to it, so there's more money for the celebration.
Yep.
You don't wanna liquidate it though, because in nine years, we're gonna have the three hundredth for the town. Well, we don't, we don't have to liquidate the treasurer account, the town treasurer, we shouldn't liquidate, we should probably always try to put money back in there, but that would take a warrant to put it in there. So I would say that get rid of the, the one on the, the one on the trustee side, close that account, we already have one that's doing the same thing, give it to the treasurer, let them manage it.
Yeah, I don't know what the purpose in nineteen eighty-five was to move it to expendable trust, except I think they felt it was a number of years.
Away.
Out, you know, and, and.
Twenty-five years came quick.
Those trust funds are getting better interest rates than ours, our general checking, so that makes sense. If it was a number of years out that they moved it there.
Oh, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a plan that covered what you wanted to do?
Yep, yep, that's, just wanna have a conversation on it and make everybody aware. If it's in a trust fund, we couldn't use it for anything else, so it has to be used for that.
Right.
Yep.
If it's in a regular fund, it can be moved around bottom line budget. So, they, they were probably smart doing that.
Well, they put a thousand dollars into it, so it grew pretty nicely over twenty-five years. Alright, moving into town administrator and selection reports.
Okay, I did put the budget schedule out there. Um, just so that you could look at it, because I know people are looking at vacations and things. And so it starts August eleventh with the first departments coming in front of you. So it's right around the corner, literally, again, here we are. So, um, July newsletter, um, next week, um, or this week, it's a deadline, Wednesday. Two ninety-seven, we're all set, I did wanna just let you know that I have, I am working with two different brokers on different types of insurance options, only so that I can bring them forward. So that once we get the health trust, um, update, which we know is going to be high.
Do.
Because of the low reserves, um, we have something to kinda, um, gauge it against. Mosquito testing is going on, I am going to load it to the results to the, um, website, but there are no problems, um, yet to report. Um, but they are actively, especially with all the rain, they are actively out there testing.
Kinda hoping that it kills them all.
Yeah, test it, change it to.
I'm doing my part at my house.
We need more beds.
Yes. June eleventh, I, I wanna thank all the department heads for, you know, that orientation. I think the, there was limited attendance, um, we did send out the slideshow. So, you know, I don't know if that's something we look at every year, because we have new board people coming on, or that's something the board can decide later. Um, but I wanna thank the department heads who were all here.
What was the attendance?
Was four or five outside people, oh, you know, committees and chair people.
That was it?
Yeah. Which, which is disappointing, but also it's the first time we ran it, right, and I think doing it yearly as a, like a orientation probably makes sense, we can probably narrow it down, but we got through the first one, we now know, okay, we can kinda cut the, you know, the.
If you could cut the time down, I think, wasn't it a two hour presentation?
It was an hour and a half.
It was an hour and a half, if you could cut it down, maybe it would be easier. There's people doing a lot of volunteer work, clearing meetings, et cetera, the, the shorter the presentation could be.
I think lia, 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 liaisons need to push a little harder on the chair and the sec, secretary or chair and the vice chair.
What if it was presented within the, um, committees themselves? So that you went to a, a conservation or a conservation chair was responsible?
We had all the department heads come, so it'd be tough to bring all the parties back in and you could have one person do it, I suppose. They all, they were all presented the documentation.
Yeah.
They already have all the acts, we just wanted to make sure they understood it and kinda read it out for them.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean.
If there's just a faster way for people to get the information and digest it, I think there was a little resistance to another hour and a half meeting.
Well, the fastest way is we gave them the link, that's where, when you.
That is the fastest.
When you gotta do business for the town, go look there first before you call fifty people, try to get something done.
Yeah.
Right, I think that's, and that was kind of what we were trying to get across is, um, who handles what? Who you contact.
Right.
For what, you know, like lots of times they get passed from person to person. Uh, because they, you know, they call me and I want them to call Karen. Or they call Karen and it's really, needs, needs to be me, or they call Donna and it, you know, it's like, so we're really trying to, there is a method, we've, it's a very defined method on who you contact.
Right. And that's, that's now available, the, the slide shows and everything?
It is, it's all in the slideshow and, uh, all the policies, I mean, we took a lot of time to put policies in that file, uh, trainings in there, different trainings that board members can take to help them understand things. So all the department heads worked really hard to get that, that drive together.
And I did look through, I, I probably should have been there myself to, to put it on other boards, I mean, I, I couldn't make it that particular night, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good for everybody to look at, it's just, like I said, I couldn't be there that day. Other people might not have been able to be there, or they might have been able to be there for a half hour, but they couldn't be there for an hour and a half. So maybe, maybe if you had that slideshow at rec, at conservation, at, and, and that was put up there, then, then more people that are in boards would see it, which is, that's the goal, right? Is that they see it, not that they attended a meeting on June eleventh at six thirty, right?
Or we could record it.
That would have been good.
Yeah, 'cause I believe this was aimed at a couple things, one of them is making sure everybody's aware of RSA ninety-one A.
Yeah.
And then the other one, something that we discussed during Kim's, um, evaluation is the number of phone calls she gets, she might get four phone calls from four people on the same commission.
Right, and we don't want that.
No, we wanna try to streamline that, reduce the number of things enter, that, that are coming into her so she could focus on her main, main priorities. Not saying they're not a priority, but let's streamline it, instead of having four people call, they should have, contact the chair and have the chair contact Kim or the secretary, but we don't need four or five members of one commission calling her to pull time away from her.
And my understand, my understanding is with past TAs, it was always the chair.
Yes, it was.
Was, the chair on, only.
So I, I'd be okay with the chair or if they have the secretary doing that job.
Yeah.
But it shouldn't be multiple people, select one and that is the contact.
And I get multiple.
Unless it's a special project.
Right, that's, you know.
Yeah, and then that person would be your contact person, but you're still not getting twelve people, you're getting that one person. And everybody's dealing with that one person.
I mean, I reassigned porta potties. In my, uh, 'cause literally I was spending hours on porta potties and I just.
Not what we want you to be spending.
And I, my whole inbox was becoming porta potties, but.
Not what we want you to spend your time on.
And, you know, I, I sent out an email, you know, for billing, contact finance, for ordering, contact, or issues, contact town hall, and already it's not.
So you had some that were for like, for your son who showed up, um, brand new to the whole process. And then you had like, um, Cal Frank there, Frank, who already knows everything. So I like your idea of the internet because you can have a welcoming section for new people. Right, and then part of your slide was other things legally, right, that could be, you know, that as well, so I think it could be up there.
We can put it on the website under.
Welcome to members or.
Or a link.
Chair's responsibility to discuss ninety-one A with all the members.
Well, I, I also think that, I, I was thinking about this after that session too, should we just not make, be aware of RSA ninety-one A as a rec, pre-race, but MHA has, doesn't NHMA have a online program around it? Kinda gives you the outline of what it is? It's, it's required reading. Right, we, I mean, we said recommend to go to a class, but not gonna go to the class for similar reasons. Well, get online and just watch the, watch the, I think it's, isn't it, uh, I'm trying to remember who does the actual, isn't it Steve doing it too? I could see, you know, let him draw.
Yeah.
Teach you about our, you know, ninety-one A, 'cause that's where the, one of the big things you wanted to come out of that session was. Here, what we've gotta deal with what RSA ninety-one A and what some of those requirements are, this is why we're asking for things to be done this way.
Right.
Because we have to accommodate all this. And you could always do, we could take the slide deck and just do a voiceover and then publish it as a video on the website.
Yeah, we could do that, I mean, so like one of the items that I, and I'm working on this for the board, which it's extensive, it's extensive, I'm still working on it, I've been working on it for months, is the new law with non-public sessions. So, you know, I've gotta go through every non-public session that you've ever had and list it by date, by topic, by, you know, and by what session, you know, what RSA rule you went into non-public under. That's time consuming, right, 'cause I wasn't here for probably, oh, most of them, and.
Nobody was here for all of them.
I've gotta read them and, and understand it.
You probably also have to list when the minutes.
I, when expiration is, right, because it expires and then we're gonna have to start sessions on you guys re, reviewing all these from, you know, eight years ago or whatever.
Riveting, yeah, really.
So, but each board is supposed to do that and that list is supposed to be here with the town and we don't. So we need that list from each board. And that was one of the things we talked about at that orientation. So that's, that's important, because after ten years, you release them all. Whether you want to or whether they should or not.
They're marked as, uh, indefinitely?
I don't think indefinitely.
If they haven't been reviewed, yes.
Can you review it and then mark them another ten?
Yes.
Ah, good, there you go.
Just keep lead frogging.
I'm very, let's, let's pull.
But if the, if the, if the reason really doesn't exist, so like with some, you can only have a non-public minutes until, like I'll take ComCom for an example. If ComCom had non-public because they were working on a, a sale or a purchase of land, once that purchase is done.
It should be released.
They have to be released.
Yeah, well, 'cause there's no reason to keep them.
Right.
And then who releases, that should be the conservation going in and releasing them.
But you gotta figure out, I mean, 'cause I was the secretary of conservation for years. And, and there was just never, what do you do with, with these non-public minutes? What do you do with them?
You're supposed to be filing at the, uh.
Yeah.
But no one, no one knew what to do, I mean, no one knows. I mean, I, I, rec probably never goes into, do you ever go into non-public?
They have.
Not rec, I don't know.
No, but you were though, you were the chairman of rec at one point.
No, 'cause it was never really a reason to.
Yeah.
You know, rec is a bit different because of dealing with organizations and.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think planning has.
No, they don't.
I don't.
Seen it?
I don't.
I haven't seen it.
It's only conservation.
Alright.
Yeah.
And, and selectmen.
So that was that, um, let me take more.
Twenty twenty-five revaluation.
It's all out there, so I did, I did create an ex, uh, a page with information, with the file of everyone's new assessments, so go to the website, go to assessing, twenty twenty-five revaluation. Loads of stuff, links to other stuff.
You can compare.
Yeah, can have.
Everybody's convinced that their taxes are going up forty-eight, forty percent because they're probably gonna assess for forty percent more.
Town valuation went up approximately sixty percent, the tax rate will drop.
And that's on that page, it does explain on the page, so people need to go look at it, and if they have an opportunity to have meetings and get that all clarified too, so.
And that's all, yeah, so if they really wanna determine their tax rate, please go read that page, if they wanna.
You can't yet.
Um, they wanna understand how it works.
You can figure out your tax rate right now?
Well, based on, yeah, you, you won't know till we said it again, but.
Yep.
Um.
You have to wait.
Yeah, there's other factors.
Yeah.
Waiting would be best.
But the reality, I mean, the thing, the message here, it didn't go up by forty-five percent, that's not your tax impact.
Right.
The, the very specific, exact amount, no, 'cause we don't know our revenues, we don't know, there's things we don't know, but a general census. The other part is, and I don't know if you've seen the news, so, um, Mayor Ruas and, um, Mayor Donches went to the Hillsborough County. They've kinda made this a big issue, um, I think the last meeting I let you know that the county budget is down, but the amount that's coming from taxes is up about twenty. So that's going to hit our residents. And so the two cities are making this a big issue, they were at the public hearing. I don't know how the county can really change it, they have union contracts, they, it's not really that their budget is going up that much, they just don't have the upper funds for the offset, so, um, I feel it, but, um, everyone's feeling it, unfortunately, and that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, moving on to selectman reports, Mr. Larry, Recreation.
Uh, rec meets tomorrow, only one meeting this month and only one meeting next month.
Gotta love summer time, yeah.
Yeah.
Gotta love it.
That's what I miss about it.
Alright, uh, Mr. Gannon, the planning board?
Uh, planning board, we had one conditional use permit for an ADU, uh, Reggie Morrow showed up with some conceptual plans and ideas for MUVD land that he, I gave him purchased behind St. Francis.
Is that the land that we tried to, Barron's is supposed to be going to?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, and the state, the state said no, because, um, this, I don't know how, I don't know how.
It's actually the federal government, they passed the state, the federal government, their, their restrictions were like way more than the.
Okay, federal government. I don't know how Reggie got, is going to be able to do it.
I got that from Andy Pearlman.
Oh, wow.
If I was Barron's, I'd be.
Well, I heard his presentation, it sounds like it's more like the stables.
Yeah, it'll be forty units up top, that'll look just like the stable and forty-four, forty-eight down bottom, that will be, uh, fifty-five plus.
And I see there's also a, a.
A daycare.
Daycare system.
Yeah, so that would be.
And they'll move their own offices in there?
Yeah, daycare and his own office, but that's, this is conceptual.
And that, that's a question of was, that's really legitimate mixed use too, I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions of whether or not our town procedure, because the, the state's mixed use, um, failed.
Yeah, I think that's.
It did, all the, all the zoning ones changed.
Oh, no, there's tons of zoning changes.
There's still, still, still new ones.
The ADU is all different, so it, yeah.
A lot of them that.
There's a lot of changes, we're going, Joan and Matt and I are going through them now.
This particular one failed, um, so you definitely wanna make sure that it's the, the, the law that, um, that, that we want.
Yeah, as you're supposed to in mixed use, and I don't know if it's passed zoning yet, do a cost benefit report, that it's a cost benefit to the town if you do a mixed use, but I don't know if we have a zoning order, ordinance for that, 'cause I've been away from that.
Well, it passed.
Which, which did, it did pass?
At the, at the, at the town level.
Oh, yeah, but we still have to go to warrant article, right?
No, no, it went to warrant article and it passed.
Which one are you talking about?
The mixed use.
Oh, the mixed use one did pass, but as, but I'm saying, they're supposed to do a report.
But the definition of mixed use, yeah.
And I don't know if that report.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I don't know if that's been approved yet or.
No, I don't believe, you were talking about the cost benefit, but I don't think it's been defined yet.
I don't see how we can approve that.
Yeah, they do have a ratio, so the other thing we worked on was the workshop for MUVD. And we were discussing parking and also the ratio of what the business brings in compared to square footage of residential and this.
what the business brings in compared to square footage of residential, and this, businesses have to be the leading factor before the residential, 'cause we don't want them to build a bunch of residentials and say, we don't have any businesses coming in. So they have to do business first to offset residential, and it'll be, uh.
It's a very.
So, whether, whether Mr. Morrow's plan will fit that.
Is a question.
But I don't know if that cost benefit report's passed yet, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, Rick, Rick's plan for the area he has, has a daycare also, but there's also possibly a restaurant or something, and then it's very walkable. But with his daycare, he also said that they're gonna subsidize it, which is.
I don't know. It's bringing a lot of people from out of town, I don't know if it's helping.
Yeah, so I know the mixture's passed, I just don't know if that report part passed, or that was part of it. And then, if it hasn't, it has to go Warren Article, and it's grandfathered, it beats the clock, right, but I don't know, I don't know the status of it, 'cause I'm not unplanning it.
Good question, thanks, so, Steve.
But it's good for economic development, that report. No, I already have it fixed tomorrow. Yeah, I kind of already did a little bit.
There you go.
Oh, let me find it, oh, here we go. Uh, SIP, we are not meeting in July.
Did Steve die?
Yes, he was.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
Oh, you called on me, right?
I did.
Oh, okay. Uh, we'll meet August fourth at six-thirty PM here at the town hall. Uh, and that was planned, we were not gonna have a meeting in July, um, let's see. Economic Development, we are writing the report, I will be here again tomorrow with you. Uh, just so you know, Laura Gandia will come to the next meeting for the zoning piece of that report. Jay Mankar will be there the following month, just for finalizing that piece. Uh, Peter Ames has been reaching out to me, had the same problem with AI on my phone. I turned AI off, and now it works, so.
Oh, there you go, there you go.
I will get ahold of him, he's gonna be very helpful with that as well. Uh, we meet Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, uh, at six-thirty PM here at the town hall, and we also meet July thirtieth. As far as NRPC, we were not too thrilled, we met on June eighteenth. Uh, we were very upset with Nashua at the moment. We still voted for it, so you talked about the budget problem Nashua has, we're all facing it, they were in the tip plan for projects, but they can't do the matching of the funding, so they had to reshuffle out to the future, you know, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-three, but we, we're not sure if that's gonna cause a bottleneck with manpower and equipment for the ones who were there, that were supposed to have their jo- you know, jobs then, so we, we, we approved it anyway, but we did, we just never saw at NRPC people saying, oh, we have a funding problem, and you had like nine on, things on the project, where the rest of us are now well, what if we had a matching grant, and now we can't go for five years, and now our matching grant doubles, that's not fair to the towns that are waiting, right, so, uh, we're, we're, we weren't too thrilled with that. Uh, they did vote me in as chair again, so I'm excited about that, um, so we'll keep going there. Uh, we next meet September seventeenth for the full commission, September seventeenth, seven PM in Nashua. The last item is the PFAS Commission Report, uh, looking at the website, they last updated it in twenty twenty-two. So, I have the minutes, they do not see the word draft on them. Uh, the gentleman said I could post them, so I will do that, the last meeting, there was nothing for changes, the April one did have a change. I'll just have to track where that one is, and I'll, I guess, uh, give them, well, what do you want me to do, give them to you, so we can start posting?
That would, that would be wonderful.
Um, a full report is due in November, every year in November, this committee that was, has to submit a report in November. Uh, he said, don't remind me, so we're gonna be working on that, the last report is twenty twenty-nine. So we'll have a full-blown report in November as well. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, I was able to attend the conservation meeting, conservation is extremely busy. Um, they work really, really hard over there, DeRosa property is getting close to closing. Um, the three hundred and sixty thousand dollar safe water, um, grant check is out and is going to us, um, and then the two hundred and twenty-five, uh, hundred thousand L chip check is out this week, so we'll be getting in five hundred and five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Giving out.
Yes, and then turning right around.
In and out.
Um, the title company, I had found a title company for them when I was on the board, and they've gone back to them um, to get, uh, the closing will be handled through them, and they're also finishing, they're tying up the ends on the deeds. The, it would be preferable in the future to use this title company, um, for deeds as opposed to the legal um, going through legal to do that, because this particular one, um, deals with a lot of, uh, conservation land, has done a million deeds for conservation land, and has done a million deeds for, um, and I got the name from a, a land trust foundation, when I first went to them for the initial, um, project. It's, it would be much more, it's two hundred thou- two hundred dollars to, for them to do a deed for us, as opposed, or two thousand. As opposed to, um, we've already got how many hundreds, thousands, whatever, thousands and thousands of dollars in legal that are gonna hit conservation, it'd be much cheaper to use this company, they have dealt with all of this land trust and conservation land deeds before.
For the pur- for the purchase and sales, or just?
Yep, the whole bit, we, we can probably go through them for all of it, and then we can submit it to legal after they do it, if you want. But then they'd be reviewing one document rather than going through all of the, the gyrations that we did.
I think typically the PNS is one transaction, and the deed is a whole nother.
It is, as they, but we also have gone back and forth on this deed, it's been for.
Oh, I know, I know.
It's been really painful. Um, and also this, I sent you a text, um, or an email about, they want to know when the shed's gonna be able to be moved um, by Kevin Brown, it was offered, um, that Kevin would do it, do you happen to?
He did go up and look for the spot that it was supposed to go, um, and he couldn't find it till he was reaching out to Matt.
And did he reach out to Matt, 'cause that's, I got this text.
Last thing he said to me was he was gonna reach out to Matt, find out where it was supposed to go.
Okay, I'll see if he did, if not, I can have Matt reach out to him. Okay, good. Um, lots of mowing and cleanup, and, um, George is working with rec on the dock. Um, so that was one meeting, I also stopped by the building facilities meeting on my way out of Heritage on the other night, so I'm trying to get to every committees' meetings, just to see what they look like, see the people that are there, and it's a little different than watching them, so I stopped at that one, I also did Heritage, and we've talked about that a little bit, um, that Marion was, um, they were all excited about their name tags too, they were really excited that they got those, so they appreciate that. Um, and Marion was gonna get with you, um, for everything that she needs to learn to do, and also to talk about the grants and all that as well. Um, and then I also went to Vicky's, uh, uh, retirement party over at the library, um, and she was really happy with the award, um, or the, the recognition. It's really a pretty, um, granted, she was really, she was touched, um, that she got it, and it was really, really nice. So, thank you for getting it for me, Kim, and thank you for the board for providing it for her, she's put a lot of years in. Um, and I think that's all I've done. I think that's all I've done, it was enough.
All right, I guess I'll roll, uh, wrap it up, um, I did attend the facilities committee last week. Uh, primary focus was their bylaws and getting that all cleaned up before they were ongoing. The RFP is still out there, they had nine firms attend their original RFP spec meeting, and do the walkthroughs, so they're expecting a considerable amount of responses. Um, and then Budget Committee, which is Thursday. I did actually attend the graduation, I was obviously there helping LCTV with their broadcast and all that, that was a great event, beautiful weather. So, that's it for me.
Kim made it too.
And I was there. I saw you there, I saw your shoes. From across the field, there he is.
I wasn't able to make it, but I do thank the school board for inviting us all, it was very nice.
It was a wonderful ceremony, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that somewhat concludes our meeting, our public meeting, we do have a brief non-public to go in, um, to address a matter, uh, under RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman number two, section C, matters which if discussed in public would likely adversely the reputation of any person, other than a member of this board, unless the person requests an open meeting. This exception shall extend to include any application for assistance, or tax abatement, or waiver of a fee, fine, or other way if they, in the inability to pay a party. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor, say aye, aye. Motion passes five zero zero, so for the public, we're gonna conclude our public meeting, have a great night, we're gonna just come out of, um, the non-public to read, um, to close the meeting, there'll no reactions after that, our next meeting is, I don't even know what the, I don't even know what date it is. July fourteenth, our next meeting is July fourteenth at six-thirty here at the town hall, but have a great, uh, rest of the week and stay out of heat.